Good afternoon and welcome to the Moore County Schools Board of Education regular business meeting on November 10, 2025. We're called to order at four P. M. Is there a motion to go into closed session for purposes as stated on the agenda?
I would.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Bruno, second by Mr. Binway. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, will now go into closed session. Thank you. All right. Good afternoon and welcome to the Moore County Schools Board of Education regular business meeting on November 10, 2025. We're called to order at four P. M. Is there a motion to go into closed session for purposes as stated on the agenda?
I would.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Bruno, second by Mr. Binway.
Is there a motion to return to open session?
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion to return to open session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Davis, second by Ms. Bruno. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. All right. Good evening everyone. Sorry we're running a little late tonight. Thank you so much for attending tonight's Board of Education Regular Business Meeting on November twenty-fifth, excuse me, November tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Don't want it, we're not ready quite for Thanksgiving. As we begin, I'd like to remind all attendees of the importance of maintaining a courteous and respectful environment throughout the entire proceedings. This ensures that board members can focus on the matters at hand and that everyone present can hear and participate appropriately. Your cooperation in remaining respectful helps us conduct our business efficiently and with thoughtfulness for all participants. Of course, during our recognition portion of the meeting, applause is welcome to show your support for the award recipients. We appreciate your cooperation. So now we're ready for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Principal Robbins, would you like to call your participants up?
Good evening, board members. This is Daylene Toledo. She is a fifth grade student in Mr. Gonzalez's dual language class.
Please stand up for the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. My name is Daylene Toledo. I am a fifth grade dual language student at Robbins Elementary School. I hope you're having a great day. I'm honored to be here. The person that inspires me the most is my uncle. He owned a construction company in Ohio. He worked very hard to build up his company. He started his company so he could make money and provide for his family. He did it with a lot of hard work and sacrifice. We went to visit him one time and it was super cool. But yes, he is the person that inspires me a lot. So what inspires me to learn is, well, I really want to go into the army because I want to protect my country. It has been my dream to do that for a very long time. And with God's help, I hope I can get in into the army. If I cannot go into the army, then I would like to be a police officer. The reason I want to be a police officer is that I want to protect people who got kidnapped or something. Same with the boys. Whatever happens, the reason for joining the army or the police is the same. I want to protect everyone. And for the little ones, make sure you follow your dreams and never give up. Times may be hard, but it does not matter. It does not mean you have to give up. No, don't ever give up. Follow your dreams. If it's hard, just keep trying. That's it. Hope you have a great day and God bless you all.
That was beautiful. Thank you so much. Ms. Davis, our moment of silence.
Yes, I figured this evening that it would just be appropriate. We're going into the Thanksgiving season and we just have so much to be thankful for. So during our moment of silence, just think on the things that you're thankful for.
Thank you. All right, we're at our favorite time. Our recognitions. And Mr. Bachelor, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Board Chair. If our board members will come up, that'll be doing our recognitions for tonight. And at this time, I'd like to call Daylene back up. We would like to present her a certificate to show our appreciation tonight for her Pledge of Allegiance and wonderful inspiration she provided. And at this time, with honorees from Northmore High School, please join board members Bruno and Johnson at the front. And so I meant staff honorees. Forgot you had the student as well. Betsy Pilson is this month's Engage Inspires to See Certified Staff Honorary for Northmore High School. Mrs. Pilson has served Moore County Schools for twenty-six years, beginning at Carthage Elementary as a tutor, media assistant, teacher assistant, and bookkeeper. After seeing the importance of steady support for students, she pursued a degree in school counseling and has proudly served Northmore since two thousand and eight. Mrs. Pilson helps students with academic planning, post-secondary readiness, and mental health needs to ensure they are well-prepared for life after graduation. She was named an exemplary professional school counselor by the College Board in two thousand and nineteen, demonstrating the high quality of her work and dedication. Sarah Mayness is this month's Engage Inspires to See Support Staff Honorary for Northmore High School. Mrs. Mayness serves as a school receptionist at Northmore High School. A Northmore graduate herself, she continued her education at Central Carolina Community College while working as a substitute teacher at Northmore and officially joined the staff in two thousand and twenty-two to support her alma mater. She handles a wide range of responsibilities such as welcoming visitors, answering calls, monitoring calendars, assisting staff, and supporting students, all with steady professionalism. Her reliability and positive approach help keep daily operations running smoothly. Northmore is proud to have Mrs. Mayness as part of Mustang Country. Would family members and Principal Patterson please stand as we recognize tonight's honorees? And at this time, with honorees from Robbins Elementary School, please join our board members at the front. And so I meant staff honorees. Forgot you had the student as well. Betsy Pilson is this month's Engage Inspires to See Certified Staff Honorary for Northmore High School. Mrs. Pilson has served Moore County Schools for twenty-six years, beginning at Carthage Elementary as a tutor, media assistant, teacher assistant, and bookkeeper. After seeing the importance of steady support for students, she pursued a degree in school counseling and has proudly served Northmore since two thousand and eight. Mrs. Pilson helps students with academic planning, post-secondary readiness, and mental health needs to ensure they are well-prepared for life after graduation. She was named an exemplary professional school counselor by the College Board in two thousand and nineteen, demonstrating the high quality of her work and dedication. Sarah Mayness is this month's Engage Inspires to See Support Staff Honorary for Northmore High School. Mrs. Mayness serves as a school receptionist at Northmore High School. A Northmore graduate herself, she continued her education at Central Carolina Community College while working as a substitute teacher at Northmore and officially joined the staff in two thousand and twenty-two to support her alma mater. She handles a wide range of responsibilities such as welcoming visitors, answering calls, monitoring calendars, assisting staff, and supporting students, all with steady professionalism. Her reliability and positive approach help keep daily operations running smoothly. Northmore is proud to have Mrs. Mayness as part of Mustang Country. Would family members and Principal Patterson please stand as we recognize tonight's honorees? And at this time, with honorees from Robbins Elementary School, please join our board members at the front. And so I meant staff honorees. Forgot you had the student as well. Betsy Pilson is this month's Engage Inspires to See Certified Staff Honorary for Northmore High School. Mrs. Pilson has served Moore County Schools for twenty-six years, beginning at Carthage Elementary as a tutor, media assistant, teacher assistant, and bookkeeper. After seeing the importance of steady support for students, she pursued a degree in school counseling and has proudly served Northmore since two thousand and eight. Mrs. Pilson helps students with academic planning, post-secondary readiness, and mental health needs to ensure they are well-prepared for life after graduation. She was named an exemplary professional school counselor by the College Board in two thousand and nineteen, demonstrating the high quality of her work and dedication. Sarah Mayness is this month's Engage Inspires to See Support Staff Honorary for Northmore High School. Mrs. Mayness serves as a school receptionist at Northmore High School. A Northmore graduate herself, she continued her education at Central Carolina Community College while working as a substitute teacher at Northmore and officially joined the staff in two thousand and twenty-two to support her alma mater. She handles a wide range of responsibilities such as welcoming visitors, answering calls, monitoring calendars, assisting staff, and supporting students, all with steady professionalism. Her reliability and positive approach help keep daily operations running smoothly. Northmore is proud to have Mrs. Mayness as part of Mustang Country. Would family members and Principal Patterson please stand as we recognize tonight's honorees? And at this time, with honorees from Robbins Elementary School, please join our board members at the front.
Is there a motion to return to open session? Okay, do we have a second? All right, there's a motion to return to open session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Davis, second by Ms. Bruno. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, any opposed? Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. Sorry, we're running a little late tonight. Thank you so much for attending tonight's Board of Education Regular Business Meeting on November twenty-fifth, excuse me, November tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Don't want it, we're not ready quite for Thanksgiving. As we begin, I'd like to remind all attendees of the importance of maintaining a courteous and respectful environment throughout the entire proceedings. This ensures that board members can focus on the matters at hand and that everyone present can hear and participate appropriately. Your cooperation in remaining respectful helps us conduct our business efficiently and with thoughtfulness for all participants. Of course, during our recognition portion of the meeting, applause is welcome to show your support for the award recipients. We appreciate your cooperation. So now we're ready for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Principal Robbins, would you like to call your participants up?
Good evening, board members. This is Daylene Toledo. She is a fifth grade student in Mr. Gonzalez's dual-language class.
Please stand up for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. My name is Daylene Toledo. I am a fifth-grade dual-language student at Robbins Elementary School. I hope you're having a great day. I'm honored to be here. The person that inspires me the most is my uncle. He owned a construction company in Ohio. He worked very hard to build up his company. He started his company so he could make money and provide for his family. He did it with a lot of hard work and sacrifice. We went to visit him one time and it was super cool. But yes, he is the person that inspires me a lot. So what inspires me to learn is, well, I really want to go into the army because I want to protect my country. It has been my dream to do that for a very long time. And with God's help, I hope I can get in, into the army. If I cannot go into the army, then I'll like, I would like to be a police officer. The reason I want to be a police officer is that I want to protect people who get kidnapped or something. Same with the boys. Whatever happens, the reason for joining the army or the police is the same. I want to protect everyone. And for the little ones, make sure you follow your dreams and never give up. Times may be hard, but it does not matter. It does not mean you have to give up. No, don't ever give up. Follow your dreams. If it's hard, just keep trying. That's it. Hope you have a great day and God bless you all.
That was beautiful. Thank you so much. Ms. Davis, our moment of silence.
Yes, I figured this evening that it would just be appropriate. We're going into the Thanksgiving season and we just have so much to be thankful for. So during our moment of silence, just think on the things that you're thankful for. Thank you.
All right, we're at our favorite time, our recognitions. And Mr. Bachelor, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Board Chair. If our board members will come up, that'll be doing our recognitions for tonight. And at this time, I'd like to call Daylene back up. We would like to present her a certificate to show our appreciation tonight for her Pledge of Allegiance and wonderful inspiration she provided. And at this time, with honorees from Northmore High School, please join board members Bruno and Johnson at the front. That's why I meant staff honorees. Forgot you had the student as well. Betsy Pilson is this month's Engage Inspires to See Certified Staff Honoree for Northmore High School. Mrs. Pilson has served Moore County Schools for twenty-six years, beginning at Carthage Elementary as a tutor, media assistant, teacher assistant, and bookkeeper. After seeing the importance of steady support for students, she pursued a degree in school counseling and has proudly served Northmore since two thousand and eight. Mrs. Pilson helps students with academic planning, post-secondary readiness, and mental health needs to ensure they are well-prepared for life after graduation. She was named an exemplary professional school counselor by the College Board in two thousand and nineteen, demonstrating the high quality of her work and dedication. Sarah Mayness is this month's Engage Inspires to See Support Staff Honoree for Northmore High School. Mrs. Mayness serves as a school receptionist at Northmore High School. A Northmore graduate herself, she continued her education at Central Carolina Community College while working as a substitute teacher at Northmore and officially joined the staff in two thousand and twenty-two to support her alma mater. She handles a wide range of responsibilities such as welcoming visitors, answering calls, monitoring calendars, assisting staff, and supporting students, all with steady professionalism. Her reliability and positive approach help keep daily operations running smoothly. Northmore is proud to have Mrs. Mayness as part of Mustang Country. Would family members and Principal Patterson please stand as we recognize tonight's honorees? And at this time, with honorees from Robbins Elementary School, please join our board members at the front. Kim McQueen is this month's Engage Inspires to See Certified Staff Honoree from Robbins Elementary School. With twenty-five years of dedicated teaching experience, Mrs. McQueen has served in exceptional children education and now excels as a reading interventionist at Robbins Elementary. Her deep understanding of student needs helped her identify reading challenges and provide targeted support to help students grow. She also assists teachers and students in a variety of ways, offering guidance, encouragement, and mentorship. Mrs. McQueen is a valued member of our school community and plays an important role in strengthening reading skills. Tina Hare is this month's Engage Inspires to See Support Staff Honoree for Robbins Elementary School. Mrs. Hare began working with Moore County Schools in two thousand and fourteen as a substitute and now serves as an instructional assistant in the preschool program at Robbins Elementary. She brings patience, consistency, and a steady presence to young learners, having previously supported multiple grade levels. Her calm manner and dedication helps students build a strong foundation for future success. Robbins Elementary is grateful for her commitment and service as a Robbins Rocket. Would family members and Principal Robbins please stand as we recognize tonight's honorees? And honorees from Westmore Elementary School, please join board members at the front. Kristen Baptista is this month's Engage Inspires to See Certified Staff Honoree for Westmore Elementary School. Mrs. Baptista serves students in grades K through eight as an exceptional children teacher at Westmore Elementary, where she was once a student herself. She previously taught at Cameron Elementary and Robbins Elementary before returning to Westmore in two thousand and twenty-two. Known for her energy and positive outlook, she forms meaningful connections and gives each student her full attention. Her deep commitment and passion are invaluable to students and the school community. Mandy McNeil is this month's Engage Inspires to See Support Staff Honoree for Westmore Elementary School. Mrs. McNeil joined Moore County Schools as an instructional assistant in two thousand and twenty-one and began working at Westmore in two thousand and twenty-four so she could be at the same school as her children. She supports kindergarten students each day, helping them build essential early skills needed for future success. She also demonstrates leadership and school spirit by coaching the Northern Moore cheerleaders. Westmore is fortunate to have her dedication and strong work ethic. Would family members and Principal Kennedy please stand as we recognize tonight's honorees? And at this time, Jayquan from Northmore will join our board members at the front. Jayquan Fletcher is this month's Engage Inspires to See Student Honoree from Northmore High School. Jayquan is a senior and is known by many as Mr. Northmore for his strong school pride. As student body president and captain of the varsity cheer team, he encourages his peers to take part in school activities and build connections. He also serves on the S two S Student to Student Group and the Moore County Schools Student Advisory Council. Through the Teacher Cadet Program, Jayquan discovered a passion for working with students and plans to pursue a career in special education. With his, with his caring attitude and cheerful demeanor, he will be an asset to the teaching profession and Northmore hopes to welcome him back to Mustang Country after he completes his degree. Would family members and Principal Patterson please stand as we recognize tonight's honoree? And tonight, we do have an additional recognition. Lieutenant Commander Nguyen is joining our board members at the front to accept us on behalf of his program. We are proud to recognize Union Pines High School's Navy Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps for being named a two thousand and twenty-five Distinguished Unit with Academic Honors by the Commander Naval Service Training Command. This national recognition reflects the program's exceptional leadership, academic excellence, and teamwork under Lieutenant Commander Timothy Nguyen, United States Navy retired. The honor also authorizes Lieutenant Commander Nguyen to make three nominations to each U.S. Military Academy, totaling nine nominations, which exceeds the annual allotment granted to a U.S. Senator. We are honored to have one of the finest Navy Junior ROTC programs in the nation and commend the students, instructors, and supporters whose dedication and determination earned this distinguished achievement. Congratulations. And if the Principal McCormick will please stand and family members as we honor their recognition. And this concludes the recognition portion. I'll turn it back over to you, Dr. Calvert.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Bruno asked for a point of privilege, so she's going to come to the podium to share a few words.
In honor of all of our veterans, each one of us owes you. I am the flag. I am the flag of the United States of America. My name is Old Glory. I fly atop the world's tallest buildings. I stand watch in America's halls of justice. I fly majestically all over institutions of learning. I stand guard with power in the world. Look up and see me. I stand for peace, honor, truth, and justice. I stand for freedom. I am confident. I am arrogant. I am proud. When I am flown with my fellow banners, my head is a little higher, my colors a little truer. I bow to no one. I am recognized all over the world. I am worshipped and I am saluted. I am loved. I am revered. I am respected. I am feared. I have fought in every battle of every war for more than two hundred years. I was flown at Valley Forge, Gettysburg, Shiloh, and Appomattox. I was there at San Juan Hill, the trenches of France, in the Argonne Forest, Anzio, Rome, and the beaches of Normandy, Guam, Okinawa, Korea, Cayson, Saigon, Vietnam, know me. I was there. I led my troops. I was dirty, battle-worn, and tired, but my soldiers cheered me and I was proud. I have been burned, torn, and trampled on the streets of countries I have helped to set free. It does not hurt, for I am invincible. I have been soiled upon, burned, torn, and trampled in the streets of my own country. And when it's done by those whom I've served in battle, it hurts. But I shall overcome, for I am strong. I have slipped the bonds of earth and stood watch over the uncharted frontiers of space from my vantage point on the moon. I have borne silent witness to all of America's finest hours, but my finest hours are yet to come. When I am torn into strips and used as bandages for my wounded comrades on the battlefield, when I am flown at half-mast to honor my soldier, or when I lie in the trembling arms of a grieving parent at the grave of their fallen son or daughter, I am proud. I am the flag of the United States of America and God bless our veterans.
Thank you, Ms. Bruno. We'll take a brief recess at this time. Thank you so much for coming. Okay. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting back into session. At this time, we're at item four, our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? All right. Motion by Dr. Dahl, do we have a second? We, we return to open session. At this time, we're at item four, consent agenda. We have a motion on the floor from Dr. Dahl to approve the consent agenda as presented. Okay. It's okay. We'll, we'll get to that in just a minute. Is there a second? All right. Second by Ms. Davis. There's a motion to approve the agenda by Dr. Dahl, second by Ms. Davis. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We can if we need to.
I would like to give my reason for.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay. I am going to vote against the consent agenda because there's a part of it, without going into it, I do not approve of co-ed wrestling. We have a boys' team. We have a girls' team. I don't see any need to have co-ed wrestling. I think you're heading down the wrong road. I don't think it's healthy. I think it's, you have men and women, and I don't care what anybody said. Ninety-nine percent of the time, men are a whole lot stronger than women are. I cannot approve this. I will not approve this. I'm totally against co-ed wrestling. Doesn't make any sense to me.
Any other comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. All right. Motion passes. Five-two. All right. We're at item five, public address to the board. Ms. Davis.
This evening, we only have four speakers, so I'll just go ahead and call all the names. You'll come up in that order. And we have Sherri Clark, John Miziac, Sammy McNeil, and Tom Lasapio. And you can go ahead and start whenever you're ready.
I've passed some papers out.
Yep, she's.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I am here today to discuss the importance of our SRO officers in the school system. These officers play a very important role in the schools. They go above and beyond to do their jobs and keep everyone safe. As a SRO officer's wife, I have seen these kids interact. As a SRO officer's wife, I have seen these kids interact with these officers. These officers are more than just police officers. They are mentors and a safe space for these kids. It is a good feeling knowing that these officers make a difference in the kids' life. These officers work very long hours with the school system. I ask you, do you really know how much they work? Because I do. I'm asking you, as the board, not to allow the Sheriff's Department to come in and take over. Our officers matter. For several years, these officers have been dealing with a lot. The problems that need to be addressed, I have some examples of on a piece of paper I provided for you. They need to be fixed. Example one, their pay. Other surrounding departments make more money than these officers do. This is a problem in itself, and why we lost so many officers, it is hard to recruit... Sorry. This is a problem in itself, and why we have lost so many officers, it is hard to recruit officers in... When you don't offer competitive wages. Example two, raises. These officers had to wait a very long time and to get their raises. There was more money that was allocated for this. Where did the money go and what was the money spent for? This is a problem in itself. Game pay. These officers work long hours with these games. These games are allocated in one check along with their paycheck. Years ago, they used to get a separate check. I don't think this should be taxed either. No one wants to work for free overtime. These officers work 24/7. They are on call all the time. They have times allocated for games, and after that time, they are not paid overtime. If they have to stay ever. They should get overtime for this, not comp time or extra paid time for game pay for having to stay ever. Also, if they are at home dealing with, they say something or gaggle or looking for a missing child, they are paid comp time for this as well. Where is these guys overtime paid? Can you look into these problems because it's so unfair to these SRO officers? Respect for our SRO officers. I have watched several meetings lately, and I've heard Hensley say that professionals take over, referring to the Sheriff's Department. How can you sit here and call your police force unprofessionals? This is slap in the face to all these officers. You have said numerous times, these guys are nothing but professionals. It takes a coward to say that about their own police force. You need to stop the lies about the training. They have nothing but training. I do not know where you get your information from, but I can tell you, this is not true fact. You need to apologize to each one of these officers. These officers deserve respect, period. Do better by your officers. Chief position. I do not know why the chief's position has not been filled yet. You need to appoint Gooch as chief. He does a great job, and officers respect him and do not mind working under him. This needs to be a priority as well. Example seven, I cannot discuss right now because it can affect the safety of our officers, but I have enclosed this example seven. But I want you to do better by these officers. They need to be in our schools, and y'all can do better as a board. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Members, I'm John Mizziak. I'm a member of the VAS Alliance Club, and we'd like to thank you for allowing us to perform site screening again for elementary kids in Moore County schools. We do have one more school... I'm sorry. We do have one more school to do, so this is kind of a preliminary result, but I don't expect significant changes as a result of that testing being at Cameron, and it's not a very big school. I want to begin very much by thanking the school nurses, teachers, and their assistants who greatly facilitated this effort. Also, the kids, they were wonderful to work with, very obedient, and much better behaved than I was ever at their age. We primarily screened kids in grades one, three, and five. In two schools, we did screen kids in grades one through five. Next year, if you know what your will, we're certainly willing to screen kids in all grades one through five. The results were as follows. Collectively, we screened 1,642 kids, and there were 155 referrals that resulted, just about 9%. We've turned over all the screening results to your nurses for follow-up, and we certainly hope that the kids indicated as needing professional exam will receive it. I do want to mention that unfortunately, we're unable to screen 816 kids this year, a much higher percentage than last year, due to the lack of parental consents being returned. I do hope teachers and... I know teachers and nurses did their utmost to secure those consents, but for whatever reason, it didn't happen. Once again, thank you for enabling this effort. I do think it will make a difference for many, many kids. I've attached a summary for each school in the... I think I gave you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello?
You start when you're ready, yes, sir.
Right. I'm going to address some of the things on this presentation that will be presented. I wrote fact or fish or fiction, turning over school protection to law enforcement professionals. The schools will be able to focus 100% only on the educational mission. That's false. School system is always responsible for the safety plans and the safety of the students and staff, regardless if there's a deputy working the premises. It says in the little thing, the sheriff's office has over 100 years of law enforcement experience. It didn't mention none of that since school safety, though. But with Officer Manus, Officer Schamberger, Officer Monroe that works for the schools, you have 100 years of law enforcement experience, and most of that is in school safety. Says in our leadership has incentive to minimize crime reported. That's every law enforcement agency across the country. By the way, I just want to mention, I... Says suppressing sexual assaults. Police reports are permanent written records. Somebody needs to show us some reports where some sexual assaults were reported and nothing was done about it. I'll be the first one to say they need to be fired, but I don't believe that's going to happen. Says it's the third highest-paid department in the county. Absolutely, false. Says active shooter training at Sammercan. I guess that's on the simulator. They didn't... They don't use Sammercan enough. It opened in 2017. The school started doing training over in 2018. They did it twice a year for the last four years. You need to check and see how the other agencies use it. You may be surprised they don't use it as much as you think they do. And I have a question for Mr. Hensley. Will you promise us tonight that you will hold the deputies to the same and same requirements that you've yoked around the Moore County schools neck since you've been on the board? Because they don't make any sense. SRT training goes against everything officers train. SROs are trained to approach the shooter one-on-one. There's no team involved in it. It's them and the shooter. So that's just something to look into. But I want to make sure I understand this. Officer Manus and Officer Monroe worked for the Sheriff's Department, so while they were up there all those years, they were professionals. But then they left, and they came three miles down the road, and they took a job for the Moore County School Police. Then they're not professionals. But if they go back to the Sheriff's Department, he takes over and works for the Sheriff's Department, then they're professionals again. I'm just a little confused. This plan doesn't make any sense. You've got some of the best officers in the state working for you now. We need to utilize them. I've been told by credible informants that the sheriff said he would hire everybody that works for the school system. Why would he do that? Because they're the ones that have the knowledge about working in the school system. It's simple. Mr. Hensley, I appreciate a lot of things you've done, but you created this problem with a lot of your negativity and a lot of your false statements, and just a little truth to them, but I want people to know the whole truth. I guess it's true, if you tell a lie long enough, folks will believe it. I think that's what's starting to happen in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The 2009 Session of the North Carolina Legislature amended Chapter 115(c) of the general statutes by granting authority to Moore County schools to establish a private police force. The wording in line eight under that Section A says, "may establish a campus law enforcement agency," not "shall" or "must" or "will establish." Section two of this bill specifically says, "This act shall apply to the Moore County Board of Education only." So why is Moore County schools one of only two school districts out of 115 in the state in North Carolina to have a private campus law enforcement agency? Why does Moore County need a private police force? Why does it appear that previous and current superintendents and administrators are so determined to hold on to control of this private force? Why have the other 113 North Carolina school districts in North Carolina not moved to have a private security agency? No one wants to remove police protection from our schools, as was ridiculously stated on Facebook, and no one wants to put dedicated SROs out of a job. The question is whether this board is protecting our schools to the best of its ability and why they and previous boards have done such a job, poor job, in fixing this situation. No one is questioning the ability of our SROs. What is being questioned is the quality and level of their training. If a serious incident happened in one of our schools which resulted in a tragic ending because of inadequate training of our SROs, would members of this administration be willing to resign their positions due to their inaction or refusal to strengthen the protection of our children? We've been discussing this situation for at least the last seven years for all the meetings that my wife and I have attended. At what point do we get serious about this? It's your job to find an answer, and let me repeat, it's your job to find an answer. Find a way to hire and properly train the necessary number of SROs to protect all of our students and teachers, and ensure that these SROs are supplied with whatever they need to do their job. If this is not possible, find another way. Yes, I know, I made it sound very easy, but all the topics that I've heard discussed in seven years of meetings that I've attended, I'm shocked that this topic has not been the number-one topic to be discussed at every single school board. I have repeatedly heard how much you care about children and teachers. Now is the time to prove it. Let me close by saying this: The parents are as much blamed for this as anyone. Where are you? Why aren't you here demanding results from this administration? If you don't speak up and speak out, I can only believe this administration will slow walk this topic for God knows how long. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we are at item six, reports, information, and discussion. Dr. Locklear, it's all right if I turn it over to Mr. Hensley. All right, Mr. Hensley, you have the floor.
Okay, first, I have a... Well, I've answered the question. So there's a brief up here. There's an unsigned brief. Is anyone going to give that, or what... Who am I talking to here? Talking to Chief Gooch and me signing?
I sent that, staff feedback on your presentation, yes, sir, on Thursday. That comes from me, but it's based on staff feedback and expertise of Chief Gooch and his team. That's the feedback we prepared to the presentation, but I think it makes sense for you to give your presentation, and I'd be happy to have staff to give that in response.
Yeah, yeah, no, we'll just... I'll just pull up my presentation. We get to the appropriate place. We'll just pull up the staff one, and we'll just... I intend for this to be a discussion because, as I've said consistently, I just believe the school board should have public discussions on important matters in front of the public. So if we could bring up my presentation, please, and then you can bring up the staff one as well on the side, and we'll just kind of toggle back and forth of them. A couple of things to start off with. First is Mr. Lasopio, who, if you don't know him, he was the last person speaking. He accurately articulated my argument, but that's because him and his wife, Joanne, have been at every school board meeting for at least four years that I can think of. And so they've been here for all the meetings, and they've heard everything that I've said over the last three or four years. This brief is... There's nothing in this... There's very little in this brief that's new. Most of this, or a lot of this, I've been saying for the last couple of years. So anyway, let me start off by saying there's some misinformation going around. You know, people pay attention to their lives. You know, people are busy. They get little bits and pieces here. I am very happy to... Actually, I'm glad everyone's here, including Mr. McNeil, so I can clarify publicly my positions on this. First, let me start off by saying that this plan is not to eliminate school security. It's to improve it by moving it to the Sheriff's Department, like is done in 98 other counties and 113 other school districts. We're not asking to do something that's odd and unusual. Actually, what's being asked of us is to do something odd and unusual. Let me say that again, and Mr. Lasopio said this. There are two school districts out of 115 in North Carolina that have their own private police force, and that's Moore County Schools and that's Charlotte Mecklenburg County. Every other, every other public school district gets their law enforcement SROs from the Sheriff's Department or the Municipal Department that supports them, or a combination of those. So we're asking to do what the vast majority, 99% of the other school districts, are doing. And this is not at all anti-police officer. I heard Mrs. Clark, obviously a spouse of a police officer who works for Moore County Schools, obviously very emotional about this, but there is nothing in this that's anti-police officer. I'm one of the most pro-police officer people ever to sit on this board. If you guys remember, I'm the one who discovered that Moore County School Police had not had any active shooter training for five years, from 2017 until 2022. Well, Mr. Gooch, I briefed that during two police chiefs, and you're the first person that's shaking your head no. Well, then, we'll go over that. I look forward to clearing the air because your two predecessors did not say that, and I've given this brief several times. Okay. I'm sorry.
It would be appropriate to let Ms. Hensley make his presentation without interaction. Thanks.
So anyway, you know, I heard the same sort of criticism. Oh, Hensley's anti-teacher. Hensley doesn't like teachers. When I held administrators accountable. When I held administrators accountable, everyone, my detractors, came out and said, oh, Hensley's anti-teacher. And I never said a single thing about teachers. I love our teachers. The bottom line is criticizing a failed policy or criticizing the administrators because of their failure to properly implement the policy is not the same as criticizing teachers or criticizing the officers. I've never not once criticized an officer of Moore County Schools Police Department, and I've never not once criticized a teacher. Have I held administrators accountable? You bet. Have I criticized the policies that set up these conditions? You bet. But just like the teacher who was told to teach sight words instead of phonics is no more responsible for that decision, right? An SRO is not responsible for a structure failure of Moore County Schools having their own police force. There's a reason why 99% of the other school districts in North Carolina have their... When I say professional police forces, that's another place where my words are getting twisted, and I'm glad to have this opportunity to clarify the error. Because I... When I said, "Leave it up to law enforcement professionals," that's not a criticism of our law enforcement officers. What that's a recognition of is the sheriff office has a sheriff. They have a chief deputy. They have lieutenants. They have captains. And if something happens to an officer, and this is very important because this is something that this board has never acknowledged. If something happens to an officer, like is happening in Charlotte Mecklenburg right now, if you're paying attention to the news, there's an officer that got a little overzealous with a student, right? So if you're an officer and something happens, do you want to work for a superintendent and a feckless school board who might throw you under the bus? Or do you want to work for Sheriff Ronnie Fields?
Mr. Hensley, I need to call order, please. Let's not refer to our employees or previous board members or, you know, anything that's not germane to the topic. You know, focus on your slides.
What exactly did I do?
Please focus on your slides.
Yeah, I'm giving the introductory. What exactly... What did I say?
You're being disrespectful to our employees and to our board members, and that's out of order. So please continue with your slides and stay on topic. Thank you.
Just please, please tell me what I said. I really don't recall. Do you not recall either?
No, I do recall. You just said, "Would you want to work for the superintendent?"
Oh, no, 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 no. That's a valid point because when it comes...
Well, it's out of order, sir.
When it comes to the...
It's out of order, sir. Please continue with your slides.
Okay, I will proceed, but if you can't have an honest discussion about the problem, you cannot arrive at an honest solution. So I do want to correct one thing that the sheriff said in his meeting with the county commissioners, and that's he's... And I think Mr. Lasopio corrected this, and that is Sheriff Field said that as long as the law is in place, Moore County School Board has no choice, but we must have our own police force. That's not true. The law that was passed 15 years ago said, "Moore County School Board," that's us, "may have a police department." It doesn't say shall. It doesn't say will. It says may. That means it's up to our discretion. That's an important point because when Sheriff Field says that, and I'm not saying he said it intentionally, it made it sound like the school board doesn't have a choice. The school board absolutely has a choice. The school board can say... The school board can say, we disband our police force. Now, obviously, there's coordination that needs to happen with that, but I just want to make sure that everyone understands the enabling legislation said may. Okay, so on with the presentation. Look, it's a sad fact, ever since the Stockton School shooting followed by Columbine and then on and on to Sandy Hook and whatnot, it's a sad fact that if a mass shooting were to happen in Moore County, it's going to happen at a school. And because of that, Moore County Schools, actually, all schools need to have the best trained, best equipped law enforcement officers to respond to an active shooter because that's why they were put there. We'll talk about that here in a couple of slides, but that's the primary purpose is to respond to an active shooter because if it's going to happen in Moore County, it's going to happen at one of our facilities. And the bottom line up front is refusal, look, we've, we've had, we have had a police force for 15 years. Again, we're one of two depart, two school districts in the state, us and Charlotte, that have it. In 15 years, right, we have never come close to having, what, 60% of our schools with SROs right now, 50%? Okay, I think it's, I think we're at 50, 60%. So we have failed in 15 years. We've never had close to 100% coverage of our schools. And it's time for the school board to recognize that we need to get out of the law enforcement business, we need to turn it over to the law enforcement professional agencies, there was an implied agencies there, people who tried to twist what I said, and the professional law enforcement agency are the sheriff's department and municipal police departments. It's a failed experiment and it's time that we admit our defeat, turn it over to the law enforcement professionals and move on. Next slide, please. And, you know, as you see up there, obviously, providing the safety of our faculty, staff and students is very important. So this brief is going to cover my perception of what the SRO mission is, what other school districts are doing, the problem with running our own school resource officers, the chronic failures that I've observed since I've been on the school board, dispelling the myth of sheriff-provided SROs, and a suggested road forward. And as I mentioned up here, very little in this brief is new, most of this I presented various times over the last two or three, four years. Some of the numbers may be wrong because I looked them up two or three years ago and they haven't updated and, you know, salaries and whatnot changed, but all this information was accurate as of the time that I researched it. I just don't have a staff of about 1,200 people to go out and research stuff. Next slide, please. Okay, so primary SRO mission is to protect the lives, this is my opinion, by the way, to protect the lives and safety of our faculty, staff and students, and if necessary, to deliver trauma medical first aid in the aftermath of a shooting. Now, Charlie, if you pull up the, if you pull up the staff brief, if you will, so let me say.
I would prefer you present yours and then we'll present, you know, we'll present our response. I think that's a more efficient way to do this.
Well, I'd rather do it interact, well, then why don't you guys go first?
No, you need to finish your presentation and then we'll hear from the superintendent. That's the way, you know, this is a parliamentary procedure, you need present yours and then we'll hear from the superintendent. That's, that's the way we're going to use.
No, no, no.
By my contract and by board policy, Mr. Hensley, I can respond to what you present, and that's what that would be, by policy and by my contract.
That's, that's, that's fine Superintendent Locklear, but I'm going back to reports and discussions, so this is a discussion of the board, so.
We need to have your full report.
The staff, well, my, my, okay, so my report's been out there all week and everyone's been able to read, I would like to have a discussion. What I want to do is I want to get discussion from the board members. So board members, what do you think's wrong with this? Do you think our SRO mission should be different?
Mr. Hensley, we'll have your, your program, your slides.
Madam Chair, I would like, I'd like this to be a discussion.
And then we'll be happy to provide comments.
Then let's, let's provide comments now.
But we want to see the whole picture. We need to hear what you have to say. This is your opportunity.
And then we're going to have a discussion on this.
Then we'll have, we'll have the superintendents and then we'll make comments and discussion, yes, sir.
And we'll have an interactive discussion.
Absolutely.
Okay, good. I've not seen that in the past, so I'm happy to see that.
We'll be happy to have a discussion.
Okay, the second, so after the Stockton, after the horrible shooting in Stockton in the mid 90s and then, of course, Columbine and then moving on to plenty of other unfortunate school shootings, that's our primary SRO mission, that's why the SRO is here, that's why the public demanded SROs. And secondary to that, it's to, it's to protect Moore County School property, to prevent criminal activities such as drug dealer dealing, public safety education and role model and mentor. But make no mistake about it, the first one there is if I took a show of hands right now, people will say, do you want your SROs to stop an active shooter or to be a role model? What's the number one priority? It's to stop an active shooter. Next slide, please. So what are others doing? Well, we are one of two North Carolina districts with our own police. So 113 other North Carolina school districts in 98 counties, 98 counties. By the way, the issue here, people really need to ask Sheriff Fields, Ronnie, why do you not want the SROs like 98 other of your fellow sheriffs? That's the real question that should be asked in this election, is why does Ronnie Fields not want the SROs like has done in Lee County, for example, where they have SROs in 100% of the schools? Oh, looky there, there's my example, surrounding counties, and you're going to see the staff, they did, they did a survey and you're going to see it here in a few minutes, and all the surrounding counties to us, every single one of them have their SROs provided by the sheriff or municipal police department. All of them have at least as good or better coverage than us. Lee County has 100%. The Cumberland County Sheriff Department provides SROs in 100% of their schools that are in the county. The other ones are provided by the municipal departments that don't do as well. The point is, all the surrounding counties, SROs provided by the existing law enforcement agencies, and they have as good or better coverage than us. Next slide, please. So disadvantages, own police force. So here's, let's go through the disadvantages, and here's the problem with not having an interactive discussion because this board never wants to have an interactive discussion. Management distraction, loss of time. All the time that we spend running a SRO department could be time spent elsewhere, like on educating our students. The chair will say, oh, the, the superintendent, oh, we don't spend much time on SROs. Okay.
Sir, remember to stick to your script and do not refer to any other person on the board or our employees. Please refer to your script and finish your presentation.
Madam Chair, I'm, first of all, madam chair, first of all, I'm not reading from a script, I'm speaking extemporaneous to my slides, you may read from a script. I am, I am talking to my points.
Stick to your points and avoid calling out anyone else.
People may say that there's no management distraction or loss of educational focus, but I'll point out, we've had, since I've been on this board, we've had three meetings with the county commissioners, I think we've had three. One of them was SROs, maybe we've had four, maybe we've had four. So either 25 or 33% of our meetings, joint meetings with county commissioners have been on SROs. There have been three committee meetings in the last month or so, all of a sudden, and I assume that the chair and the superintendent have attended those, and if those are an hour and a half each, that's six hours, 12, 13 hours of management time right there. So every single one of those hours spent by our senior staff running a police department could be spent on focusing on education and let the law enforcement professionals run law enforcement. That's, that's what bullet one means right there, I just explained it. It diverts education funds from law enforcement activities. Talking with Sherri Womack, the chair at Lee County, they, Lee County Schools, according to the chair, gives the sheriff all the funds that they get for SROs, if they get an SRO grant or this or that, they give them that money and then the sheriff department makes up the rest via the county or somehow. This is the low-cost option. I keep seeing straw men being thrown up, like, oh, we can get part-time officers, written them from departments and all that. Doing anything other than letting law enforcement providing SROs directly diverts educational funds from education to law enforcement activities, that's a disadvantage of us having our own department. We don't have the corporate expertise or infrastructure. Okay, maybe I should have said thousands of years of experience up here, I was trying to be polite to the elderly gentleman at the sheriff's office. The point is, regardless of how my detractors, both of them, try to twist and turn this, I'm sorry, all three of them, regardless of how much they try to twist and turn this, I didn't call our department unprofessional. What I, what I was saying is we do not have critical mass. The sheriff's department has a sheriff, they have a chief deputy, they have detectives, they have evidence techs, they have admin, they have a training section, they have drug dogs, they have all this critical mass that we don't have. When you're a small department, a larger part of your time is spent via administrative tasks, right? So the sheriff department has, first, they have capabilities that we couldn't even hope to have, even if we were full up at our 45 people or whatever. So there's economies of scale to be had. When we were discussing, two months ago, it's right there a bullet, can I say it, madam chair, right there in a work session, when we were discussing the security posture of the surrounding counties, which by the way, very, very important with security, especially counterterrorism, you don't want to be the softest target out there. So when we were discussing this, the superintendent, and this is no slam on Dr. Locklear, he's not a law enforcement professional, he did not know the security posture of the surrounding school districts, right? Guarantee you, the sheriff would know that. You know, if Lee County has 100% SROs, I want 100% SROs. If Lee County had 30% SROs, maybe I'm okay with 50. But, you know, part of a law enforcement agency is the sheriff would know that stuff, that's the sort of stuff that a law enforcement professional would know. And again, they have the infrastructure, recruit, train and provide ongoing LE training. I saw a passage in the staff-provided training that, you know, one of the excuses, if you will, was, well, you know, ever since we decided to double our force three years ago, we've had the same recruiting problems that other sheriff officers have had. Lee County has 100% SROs, Cumberland County has 100% SROs, you know, this big recruiting problem appears to be mainly a Moore County Schools thing. Loss of community policing, this is actually an interesting one because this was actually pointed out to me by two municipal police chiefs who are no longer municipal chief police in Moore County, by the way, subsequently retired, but one of their complaints was that the SROs who are not tied to the municipal police department have contact with the students eight hours a day, you know, 50% of the time they're awake, and then those students go home to the municipal police department, the municipal police department deals with them, regardless of how many liaison meetings and coordination meetings you have between the Moore County School Police and, you know, choose a department, Aberdeen Police, Southern Pines Police, Pinehurst, you're never going to have good turnover. So if, if the municipal or sheriff department that provides the policing outside of the schools does the policing inside the schools, they, their community policing is much better because they deal with those young people in school, out of school, on the weekends and at night. There's a built-in conflict of interest, and this is, this is a real problem, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the last one because I have seen that, I witnessed that with my own eyes, and I've seen people not get justice because of the conflict of interest. First, let me say, and this is not, this is not an indictment of any person, but leadership has an incentive to minimize crime reporting in Moore County Schools. I mean, just recently, last semester, we had four SROs at once deployed at Cranes Creek Middle School, four SROs at once, deployed from Cranes Creek, took two of them, three of them from other facilities, right? No one knew about that, no one in the school board knew about that, no one in the public knew about that, but you know where, if that happened in Hope County or Lee County or Stanley County, you all would know about it because you'd read about it in the police blotter. Funny, but we don't have a police blotter, so you really don't know what's happening inside your schools. But Moore County Schools redeployed four SROs to one middle school, took coverage from three other schools, didn't even bother to tell not just the public or the parents, didn't even bother to tell the school board. Not, not good, not good. Let's talk about the jurisdiction loop, and I'll tell you, I will give a firsthand personal example of this. About twice a year, I, I hear a parent comes to me and complains about this, and the first couple of times, I tried to do something about it, and I witnessed an example of this myself, couldn't get anywhere, and I've given up. Here's what happens, an employee or a student, or generally a parent of a student, but this is both employees or a student, parent of student believes they're a victim of a crime, the Moore County School Police refuse to take action, i.e., refuse to refer that crime to whoever, the district attorney, right? And they're told, well, you can go to the, you know, magistrate, right? Actually, let me back up. So, so an employee or a student feels they're a victim of a crime, the Moore County School Police refuse to take action, then the people go to the jurisdiction, right? Like here, you know, maybe they'd go to, well, in Carthage Elementary, they go to Carthage Police, or at High Falls, they go to the sheriff's department, or in Southern Pines, they go to the Southern Pines Police Force. So the same aggravated person goes to the municipal police force that would generally service their school, and they're told, we don't have jurisdiction. And then the parent or employee has nowhere to go, right? Because the school police say, we're not going to look into that, and, and the other people who they would turn to won't look into it and say, we don't have jurisdiction. I saw that right out here during one of the protests. I saw a anti, or it's hard to tell, a pro-COVID masked person intentionally assault, gosh, they're not here, they were here, and I saw a person get assaulted out here during the COVID drama. The people who were assaulted reported it to the Moore County School Police, and it was assault, I saw it with my own eyes, the Moore County Police saw it with their own eyes because they were standing there, they saw the same thing I saw. The Moore County School Police refused to do anything about it. Those people went to, I believe it was the Carthage Police, they said, sorry, we don't have jurisdiction there, and nothing happened while the district attorney was prosecuting people for doing the same thing that I saw witness with my own eyes. So there's this jurisdiction loop that, again, once or twice a year, I get a complaint about this, and I looked into the first couple and I'm like, wow, I think there's something here, but again, been completely, completely flustered and unable to do anything about that. Next one, please. So, you know, look, this has been going on for 10 years, you know, two-plus superintendents, five-plus school boards, and it's endangering the life and safety of our employees. You know, you can sit here and say, gosh, we've done this, we've done this, we've got to do this, we've done this, but the bottom line is, as we sit here today, I believe the number is 13 of our schools do not have an armed SRO. Maybe it's 12, maybe it's 11. And we've never had more than, you know, maybe 50, 60%. And it's an ongoing issue. Then, as you're going to see in the coming slides, Moore County Schools put minimal effort into upgrading the force and only went on, only went under pressure, and I'm going to go through this chronologically a bit in the future slides, so next slide, please. You can see all that right up there. The previous school board, I recommended, my recommendation, and I don't need to dwell on this because I've moved on, but my recommendation was increase the standards significantly and have the Moore County School Police be the best paid in exchange for being the best trained and best equipped, they would be the best paid officers in Moore County in exchange for a significant increase in their ability to stop an active shooter. The school board decided not to go that route, the school board with the recommendation of the sense The school board with the recommendation of the central office decided to do two back-to-back ten percent pay raises. At one point, a couple of years ago, we were the third highest paid department in the county. That's obviously not the case now. And the result has been the same or fewer officers. So we had two back-to-back significant pay raises and we ended up with fewer officers. And that last bullet right there, people can refuse to recognize that, but that's the crux of the matter. There's a reason why a hundred and thirteen school districts do not have their own police force. The school board needs to think long and hard about that last bullet uh, when we eventually step up and do the right thing. Next slide, please. Okay, so in January twenty twenty-two, I discovered in brief, Moore County SROs not had active shooter training in five years. I look forward to hearing your report. This is the third time I've briefed this. And if there's evidence to the contrary, my question is going to be, why wasn't that presented in twenty twenty-two when I presented this or in twenty twenty-three when I presented this slide? So we'll, that'll be an interesting question. And then previous to twenty twenty-two, uh, Moore County Schools had no trauma medical training. They didn't have stop the bleeding training. They didn't have stop the bleed kits. The result was Moore County Schools started active shooter training or resumed active shooter training in twenty twenty-two. And then SROs had minimal trauma training. They had the stop the bleed training, which I would consider minimal trauma training uh, in twenty twenty-three, which was over a one-year delay, right? So it was pointed out in January twenty twenty-two that um, there had never been, there hadn't been active shooter training in five years and there was never any stop the bleed or trauma medical training or stop the bleed kits issued. Um, and that took over a year to reconcile or to fix. County Commissioners gave us money to expand the uh, the police force in uh, September of twenty twenty-two. Again, you'll see um, the, the staff did a slide that said, well, you know, we didn't decide to double our police force until September of twenty twenty-two. Yeah, and once again, that proves my point of why academics shouldn't be in charge of a police force because that was in response of a horrible thrift, horrible shooting. I don't, I can't keep up with them. And the county commissioners drug us there to say, look, we wanted SRO in every school. We should have done that. I had been saying that for, for two years, I'd been saying that. Finally, the county commissioner said in September twenty twenty-two after a tragedy. And um, they gave us the money to expand our, our force and to buy equipment for all the uh, all the officers. And I provided several briefs on recommended equipment for active shooter response and trauma medical. Um, the results were stop the bleed kits uh, were purchased for officers. They should be belt mounted. When I see deputies out, I see them wearing uh, tourniquets and whatnot. I, I'm not sure that I've seen tourniquets on our SROs. But anyway, we got stop the bleed kits and um, no active shooter response equipment was purchased until the fall of twenty twenty-four. Two years after the ca, the county commissioners gave us money, two years later, election year, all of a sudden they buy some equipment. And this is interesting, Ms. Clark, because let me, let me point out a couple of things. I, I produce, my company, we sell equipment generally to federal agencies.
Mr. Hensley, all remarks should be addressed through me, please, and not into our audience. Okay? Stay to your script, please.
Again, I don't read a script. I'm speaking extemporaneous. Thank you. Um, well, there is a difference between reading a script. That's why I pointed out. Um, I came up with suggested list of premium gear. I even offered to get that stuff donated by our, by our vendors and not the junk that they normally issue, you know, unfortunately, state and local law enforcement, but like the good stuff that they issue agents, really nice vests and lightweight plates. I was going to get all that donated, but you know what? The central office never called me and asked me to donate. They never gave me a list. So who's interested in fixing this? Who's interested in properly equipping our officers? And who's dragging their feet? Next slide, please. So let's talk about the myth of sheriff provide the SROs. A lot of people said, oh God, you know, people spread that, well, if you do away with us, the school police department, there won't be SROs. Quite the contrary. Um, the, the temporary safety committee's data, own data shows that all the surrounding counties have SROs provided by what I call the professional police, existing professional police forces, and they all have as good and better coverage. And you even heard one of the speakers tonight say the sheriff's office agreed to hire all the SRO, existing SROs. So what's the downside? If the sheriff's office is agreed as one of the speakers proudly announced that the sheriff will hire all the existing SROs, that let's just bolt it on the sheriff's department? Let the sheriff hire a dozen more officers, which is what the sheriff's office does, and let's turn it over to the sheriff's department. What's the objection? Um, so anyway, it's quite the opposite. Insisting we have our own departments caused us to be the most vulnerable school district in the surrounding area. Their numbers, not mine. Um, well, you've seen it right there, you know? Hundred and thirteen North Carolina school districts have their SROs provided by the sheriff. They have better coverage. Lee County, a hundred percent coverage, a hundred percent of the time. Hope County, a hundred percent coverage at high school, middle school and rotating coverage at elementary schools. That's more than we have, maybe, maybe, maybe a little bit more than we have, probably about what we have, maybe. I think it's more than we have. Next slide, please. So look, what's the road ahead? The road ahead is, this has been, this was an experiment passed ten years ago. We've never fully staffed up. Um, we need to leave it to the law enforcement professionals. There's really no good, I'm, I'm really interested in hearing the good reasons why the ninety, hundred and thirteen other school districts should have their own police department. That's what I'm really interested in hearing from the central offices. Why are we different from the other hundred and thirteen and how are we doing it better? Even though, you know, everything I hear on this school board is evidence-based, evidence-based. Well, the evidence would show that turning it over to the sheriff's department is much better. It's cheaper, it's easier on us, it lets us focus on our core mission and they are staffed and organized to do that. So I believe that we are living on borrowed time. I had a, I had a temporary measure there that we work with the sheriff and municipal departments, provide a hundred percent coverage to all schools. Now, I hear the temporary safety committees working on an initiative to get some part-time officers fifty-five dollars an hour and they're off time. Uh, and that's okay as an interim measure, but this is not going to be fixed. Whether, whether it's fixed in Hensley's second term, third term, fourth term, someone else's twenty years from now, this is not going to be fixed until Moore County Schools does the right thing and lets the sheriff department and municipal departments step up and take over the protection of our faculty, staff and students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley, Dr. Locklear.
Madam Chair, can I join my team?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to be clear, this um, combined feedback from, basically the way the team and I put this together is looking at Mr. Hensley's presentation per policy. I appreciate him getting that to me ahead of time. So I had the opportunity to work with my team to get feedback on his presentation. Now, these other questions and thoughts that he's thrown out, we didn't have time to prepare for that. We didn't have time to look at that and get facts and data back to respond to that. So we may or may not be in a position to respond to that tonight. But if those questions are taken down, be happy to, to, to circle back with that, report back to the board on those questions or perceptions, et cetera, that have been shared tonight. Uh, but we may be able to respond to those or I may be able to respond to those. So the first, the first slide there, uh, the bottom line up front, um, talking about refusal, the, the school board and central office recognize chronic failure, our ability to recruit, et cetera. Uh, the district's worked to recruit officers since the expansion in November of twenty twenty-two and the board of commissioners um, put a resolution together supporting and would support with financial resources, the expansion in our department. Prior to twenty twenty-two, when that was expanded and that, there's information that I'll have Jamie and possibly Chief Gooch to present on. Um, his, our, our department was created uh, with, I believe, twelve officers to begin with. Um, and it was, it was staffed that way to have officers share their support in elementary schools, et cetera. Uh, so prior to that expansion, that's what the, that's what the department was built on. Uh, and that's what it was staffed on. Once we had the green light, if you will, to expand and to fully staff throughout all the schools, that's when we began our work to try to expand the department. Uh, of course, we've faced the same challenges that other law enforcement agencies across the state have faced with recruitment of officers. And this is compounded in Moore County Schools by the requirement that we, uh, in hiring a school resource officer, that does not allow our MCS police to hire a probationary officer in their first year of service. So they have to have gone through that probationary period before we can hire them as a school resource officer. We discussed a little bit of that in the temporary safety committee, had the idea of what the sheriff's department does with their cadet program of hiring uh, ahead of time, uh, someone allowing them to actually go through BLET at Sand Hills Community College and paying them while they're getting that certification and bringing them on as a probationary officer. Unfortunately, general statute does not allow us to do that. Uh, but it's a great idea and we'll continue to advocate for that. The next slide where Mr. Hensley goes over, there was no feedback there. Um, according to, the next slide, which talks about the SRO mission. Um, the primary mission of SRO, I would agree, is to protect and serve, just like all law enforcement. But according to the National Association of School Resource Officers, the goals of well-founded, founded school resource officer programs include providing safe learning environments in our nation's schools, providing valuable resources to school staff members, fostering positive relationships with youth, developing strategies to resolve problems affecting youth and protecting all students so they can reach their fullest potentials. This organization considers it a best practice to use that triad concept to define the three main roles of school resource officers, educators, informal counselor, mentor and law enforcement officer. Uh, the next slide, Mr. Hensley had what others are doing. And of course, he, he noted, we're one of two districts in uh, the state that has our own school police force. Uh, and at a hundred and thirteen, the other districts, uh, they, they're served through municipalities and sheriff's department. Um, as I get down to, we start talking about disadvantages, I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. Sinan and Chief Gooch, and we'll also be going to the presentation that was shared at the school safety committee in September. Um, but what I would say as superintendent, it's a unique situation that we have here in Moore County Schools. They have had our own school police force approved by general statute. It was an innovative idea uh, that was supported by our general assembly. Uh, and I think it's, it's an advantage that we have to have our own school police that is consistent, that specifically officers who want to be school police officer, school police resource officers in our schools. And it's been a great resource for Moore County Schools. Uh, so I feel that we're fortunate in Moore County Schools to have that. And of course, we want to continue to grow that as well. Uh, but I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Sinan and Chief Gooch to walk through our, our feedback on our own. When Mr. Hensley talks about disadvantages there, a couple of points we want to make about training and we'll go to the presentation shared, temporary safety committee to really hone in on that. Ms. Sinan.
Thank you. Um, so in taking a look at this, Moore County Schools Police are required to have the same training as all other law enforcement officers. They have more training than a lot of other departments do because they're required to have that basic law enforcement training plus any other trainings that our sheriff's department or municipalities have, plus they have to have those additional trainings for the SRO training, active shooter training, all of those things that they have. Um, this was part of the presentation that was shared at the um, temporary safety committee. And that shows what the training requirements are for our SROs. Um, you'll see that they have to have the basic law enforcement training, which is done prior to hiring. They have to have that. They have to have the certified, I, I cannot see. Sorry, I need to pull up, pull this up here. I can't see all the way over there. I do, but that's for this. Yeah, I can't see that far. Um, so basic law enforcement training, all officers have to have that prior to training. They have to be certified with the North Carolina Criminal Justice Training and Standards Commission. Within twelve months of their hire, they have to have the school resource officer certification. So any officer that is working in our schools as an SRO for, I believe it's twenty hours, correct? Um, if they get to twenty hours, they have to have the um, school resource officer training. So other departments, other municipalities, if they come in, they're going to have to have that. We also have our annual in-service training requirements set forth by North Carolina Criminal Justice Training and Standards Commission. These are online trainings, but there are some face-to-face as well. Um, for example, and this is just two of them, they have hazmat training and they have bloodborne pathogens. There's a variety of trainings that they have to, have to have each year. Um, they have to have firearms, daytime and night range qualification training. That is done annually. And then school active shooter simulator training at Samarcand. Um, all officers have that annually. And to go back to, and I don't know if um, Chief, if you want to share any of this, we contacted Samarcand because we wanted to see what were the dates that we did have training at Samarcand? Moore County Schools Police, when were they at Samarcand? There were two gaps that we found out when we contacted them. There was a gap um, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. And there was a gap two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. All other school years that are in there since um, two thousand seventeen. Um, the first simulator training was February eighth, two thousand seventeen. From then on, there was training except for the gap in those two years. Um, so Gooch had contacted Samarcand to get those dates to make sure that what we had was accurate. We wanted to make sure that we had that accurate training. Charlie, if you can, you've got, um, we have rapid deployment training every year. Um, they have Narcan training. All officers have to have Narcan training if they're going to carry Narcan. Stop the bleed training is every two years. Um, CPR training is every two years to keep their certification. And then they have de-escalation training. All officers have that. And then our certified officers that have TASers also have their recertification. If we can go to the next slide for specialized training, I'm going to let you, if you want to share this.
Yeah, specialized training, we have rapid deployment instructors. We got uh, two farm instructors. We have one SRO instructor, one SAMD instructor, one hazmat instructor, one active shooter instructor, one stop the bleed instructor, one CPR instructor and one person responding instructor. Uh, I am a graduate, graduate of the FBI National Academy. All officers have SRO CIT, which is crisis intervention team training. Like I say, stop the bleed and, and Narcan certification and force certification and advanced SRO training. Well, I want to start off by saying all of our SROs are here because they want to be. All of them had the opportunity to go somewhere, but they chose not to because they were to work for kids. And I would say all of them have worked for uh, municipalities, even the sheriff's department. Uh, but I'm going to be perfectly honest, we are seriously getting tired of this mess. We work too dang hard to be bash. Don't bash us to make the, the sheriff's department or, or any other municipality look good. But you did correct what you said about the professionalism. And I accept that as you didn't mean it that way. But that's the way we took it in the beginning. Now, I have thirty years at a, at a local municipality here in Moore County. I ain't never worked as hard in them thirty years I did at the SRO. I can tell you that. Because we work from six-thirty in the morning to ten-thirty, eleven o'clock at night sometimes. People don't see that stuff. Then we turn around and get up the next morning and do the same thing all over again. It's hard enough trying to keep you guys motivated to come to work and do the same thing every day. And to start reading social media and hear all this crazy stuff. Ain't no fact to a lot of it, but some people believe it. You can trust, trust me on that because I get phone calls. Some people believe that stuff that they hear. But we work too dang hard to be bash. If you want to go to the sheriff's department, go with the sheriff's department. Who, I, me personally, I don't care. Go with the sheriff's department. These guy got a family, they got to survive. And they, I'm sure they will. If the sheriff's department going to take them on, that's fine. I honestly believe they all can go somewhere else and work too. But at the same time, we do this every day because we want to. Me personally, I don't have to be here. I love what I do. That's why I'm here. My plan was to retire back in uh, April, uh, June. But I decided to stay here because I want to work, continue to work with these guys. I know Chief Harley left, somebody had to stay here and help. But I can honestly say, if you want to go to the sheriff's department, go ahead.
Go back to the, the other presentation, please, Charlie. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. So we go to the next slide, again, moving on down, uh, to own police force disadvantages. Again, noting that, uh, talking about loss of community policing, build-in conflict of interest jurisdiction loop, noting that Interim Chief Gooch attends a monthly meeting with other police chiefs and the bi-weekly comstat meetings, all officers patrol and are visible at after-school events, and they're visible at community events. Um, you know, the, the perception that there's a build-in conflict of interest or jurisdiction loop, um, I'm gonna disagree with that. Um, our officers are ones of high character, uh, and they follow the law, and they're held to high ethical standards of law enforcement. And so I certainly disagree that there's ever gonna be a time where things are gonna be tried to be covered up to lower data or lower numbers, um, which is seen by the example that you gave, Mr. Hensley. When there's something going on at a school, we're gonna respond to it, and we're gonna deal with it, and we're gonna give appropriate consequences. The example you gave had to do with a break in communication of me giving the board my usual, no surprise heads up. That's what that was about.
I have other examples if you want to get into.
Well, let me get to that. Did you ever email me those complaints that you got and share that data with me specifically, Mr. Hensley, as required by board policy in my contract?
I'm sorry, what complaints?
Did you ever email me or share with me the specific information about the complaints you got?
Concerning what complaints?
Concerning law enforcement and things not being reported.
I, I, I did, I did. I shared, I shared them contemporary, I, I, contemporary, I shared my concerns.
That's not what's required by board policy in my contract.
No, I did, I did as record, I did as required by board policy, and every single case, I brought it to your attention and the rest of the board's attention.
I've never received detailed information.
I can pull up board videos where I brought it to your attention.
That's not what I'm talking about. Did you ever send me an email that said, Dr. Locklear, this is a specific complaint I've received from this parent, and shared that information with me?
Can you show me where a policy says I need to send you an email? Show me the policy that says I need to send you an email.
Says policy in my contract says you need to send me specific information.
You said I need to send it via email, so why don't you pull it up?
I'm not arguing with you, sir, I'm just asking.
Sir, you're the one who brought it up, and now I'm asking you.
No, sir, you brought it up. When you said, I'm gonna, just answer this to you, you brought it up.
We'll watch the video and we'll figure out, you said that I was, that I was required by contract to notify you via email, and I said, please provide where I have to.
In writing, did you ever give it to me in writing? Did you ever share with me the specific names and information? Did you share that in a board meeting?
Let's bring it up and take a look.
On video, there was names and information and dates and details?
I, I shared it to the amount of detail that I felt appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. So, as noted in here, Chief Gooch said, "Charges are filed and reported to the district attorney. Police officers are sworn officers who are held to standard of their oath of office. If they do not report, they are at risk of losing their police certification." Moore County Schools Police Officers work with families to ensure they know who to report criminal activity to when something happens outside of Moore County Schools. So again, saying specific information is requested about these situations referenced in this slide, uh, so we could follow up and investigate those situations. Next slide is MCS chronic failures. Again, talk about training and equipping. Chief Gooch and Ms. Sinon just went over, uh, the training information that was shared from those slides from the Temporary Safety Committee, uh, to the high standards of training that our officers receive. Uh, the next slide, failure, recruiting and maintaining the force. Um, we did share salary information, and that was presented during the Temporary Safety Committee on September 23rd. I'm gonna ask Ms. Sinon that she would, we'd bring that presentation back up. Charlie, that's slide six, and we'll share that salary information that was shared at the committee. Ms. Sinon?
So on this slide, you'll see we reached out to our local municipalities and our Moore County Sheriff's Department. At the very top, you'll see the range of salary for our Moore County Schools Police Department starts at $40,388, um, and $89 cents. The highest range for our officers are $65,325.72. When we take a look at where they rank in salary comparisons, the lowest, um, end of that, of that range is 10 out of 11 departments, and then the highest part of that range is ninth out of 11 departments. So you're able to see, um, those local municipalities, the Moore County Sheriff's Office, um, and what their salary ranges. These are for, this is for a police officer or deputy without rank. We do have officers that have rank, we have, um, our chief, we have a sergeant, we have lieutenants, um, we have captains. The, um, Moore County Schools Police range is dependent upon 10, 11, or 12 months of employment and the years of service. So this is on the classified scale for Moore County Schools, so it's based on those things. We do have some officers that are 12 months, um, to provide those services as we have summer school and read to achieve camp and those things, um, and some that are 11 months, and some, most of our officers are 12 months.
Again, on training the force, the failure there, um, noting and Ms. Sinon and Chief Gooch talked about this, Moore County Schools Officers are required to go through that active shooter training. Uh, we, uh, just shared the data on the, the gaps that did occur, uh, there in training. Uh, those did overlap through some of the COVID closures as well, uh, but those gaps were just shared. Um, police officers are not required to have trauma medical training, their roles to go after and stop the threat, that's that rapid response training that they get. Medical services are provided by the school nurse or first responders. However, Moore County Schools Police are trained, behavior threat assessment management, CPR, and stop the bleed. Next slide, equip failure, equipping the force. Just note there that Moore County Schools' equipment purchases and training is driven by law enforcement professionals and standards. Uh, and then the next slide, displaying the myths of sheriffs provided SROs. Surrounding district coverage was shared during the Temporary Safety Committee on September 23rd. I'm gonna ask, um, Ms. Sinon and Chief Gooch, uh, to share that information with the entire board. Uh, I will note that I misspoke at work session when I said Lee County didn't have a homicide coverage, I was wrong, I misspoke. But in general, uh, around surrounding areas, you'll see, um, are below or at around where we currently have coverage in our schools. Um, so I just wanted to note that, and I've always said, when I say something wrong, I say I was wrong, and I was wrong with that matter. Jamie, if you wouldn't mind, or Chief Gooch?
Another thing Mr. Hensley brought up, that, uh, we didn't have access to, uh, some of the things that the Sheriff's Department have access to. Yes, we do, that's what the mutual aid is for. You got access to everything they have access to. And I spoke with the sheriff about that, and we, everybody understands that, that's what the mutual aid is for.
So we reached out to the districts that are around us, that surround us, um, and some of the districts that are in our region. You'll see each one of them highlighted here. Um, we've got Moore County, you've got the list of, um, how many schools we have, and then how many SROs we have, and where those SROs are, um, primarily located. We do have coverage in our elementary schools, again, but that's rotating like you'll see in some of the other districts. Hope County has 14 schools, they have seven SROs. Um, officers serve multiple schools, and there's two SROs that serve one high school. Um, and I, let me just say that this was information that, um, our chief contacted whoever the point of contact is for the SROs in their district. So even though the, the school systems that we contacted have the local municipalities or the Sheriff's Department, there still is a point of contact at the school. So whether they have their own police department like we do here, there's still a point of contact in the district that is that liaison between whatever municipalities, whatever local law enforcement agencies they work with, and the school system. Um, so Chief Gooch reached out to those folks at each one of those schools, um, or school districts to get this information from them.
I'm sorry, can we, just, just to make this easier, I, I'm having a hard time understanding. I said 50% earlier when I was talking, and Chief Gooch said, "No, no, we have higher than 50%." Can you tell me, based upon the math up there, can you tell me what the coverage of our schools is? I see we have 11 SROs in 23 schools. I'm interested in how we don't have 50, how we have more than 50% coverage if we have 23 schools and 11 SROs.
I, I didn't say that, I don't know if you're getting that from, I didn't say that.
Okay, so what percentage of our schools do we have covered?
Well, I ain't did the math either, but I didn't say what you just said I said.
Okay, well, can someone do the math? I guess it's 23 minus 11, but you got two at one high school, so we have, uh, 12, 11 out of 23 schools covered, is that correct?
All of our schools have an SRO that is assigned to them.
No, no, I'm talking 100% coverage. We have to normalize this across districts, right? So we have, we have less than 50% of our schools covered with a full-time SRO, is that correct?
I, I would, I would have to do the math, and I'd have to do the math for each one of the, each one of the districts.
Well, let's just do it for Moore County, we have 11 SROs and we have 23 schools.
Mr. Hensley, like I said.
I'm sorry? No, 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 but there's two, there's two at Pine Crest, and then normally there's two at Union Pines, but there's just one, so, so we have 22, we have 12 of 23 schools covered, maybe 11? Oh, we have 11?
We have 22 brick and mortar schools.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, the 24th is covered, uh, Sandhills Community College.
We have 11 SROs and two at Pine, and two at Pine Crest, so that leaves, so we have 10 of 22 schools covered.
I'd have not, I'd have to go through, I'd want to go through each school, et cetera. We have assignments and coverage at all schools, but full-time, all day long, you're right, there isn't full-time coverage, we talked about that a good bit.
We, we have, we have, we have full-time equivalents at less than 50% of our schools. We, we have to normalize the, how do you analyze the data if you don't normalize? It's gotta be full-time equivalents or something. How did the committee do it? When you went through this, how did you?
Mr. Hensley, this is what was shared at committee.
Right, but how, right, what's the?
If there's, if there's different questions that you're asking, I'd be happy to follow up on that and get it in a different format for you and the board.
Dr. Locklear.
But right now, we didn't, we didn't become prepared to talk about it in those, those forms, so it's not fair on my staff to sit here on the point and throw it out there.
I'm not asking your staff to do a single thing, Dr. Locklear, I'm asking, I'm asking Robyn Calcutt how her, how her committee compared this information.
Yeah, we need to keep going on, we, we, we've got a lot of other things to talk about.
So you didn't, you didn't compare it.
But my point is, and I will address it, we looked at the information, we know that our schools have SROs assigned at all schools, but yes, right now, full-time, only 50% of our schools are covered.
Less than 50%.
And so, thank you for that clarification, Ms. Sinon, if you'll continue.
The reason I pointed out, this is extraordinarily important, this is the crux of the argument, and you guys can't even say what the percentage is.
We get it, thank you, Mr. Hensley. Let's keep going.
Okay. Um, so you'll see, you've got Lee County there, which we've talked about previously, Chatham County has 14 schools with 11 SROs, uh, Montgomery County has 13 schools but six SROs, Harnett County has 28 schools with 17 SROs, Randolph County has 37 schools with 26 SROs, Cumberland County has 86 schools, um, they have multiple municipalities, the Sheriff's Department covers 30 of those schools that are outside of the city limits, and then they have officers from Fayetteville PD, Hope Mills, Spring Lake, and Eastover that cover the other schools. Scotland County has 10 schools, um, five are in the city of Laurinburg, uh, are covered by Laurinburg PD, five are in the county, which are covered by the Sheriff's Department, um, so you've got the coverage that's listed there as well. Um, in most situations of what we've seen with around us is that they have shared, SROs are assigned to schools, but they are shared with multiple schools.
Thank you, ma'am. So that, that's all the feedback that we had, uh, on the presentation from Mr. Hensley. Um, so I appreciate the opportunity to share that, that feedback with the board.
Thank you, sir. At this time, um, I did want to open the floor if there were any board comments that you would like to share, and we'll use our, um, Robert's rules at this time of 10 minutes. Okay, Miss, okay, yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, Jamie. I, I didn't understand because you kept on saying that these other county schools have SROs in them? Okay, would you explain that to me?
Yeah, the, um, SROs are our school res- our school resource officers.
Yes.
Which is what our officers are, all of these districts, that is the breakdown of the school resource officers that are within those buildings.
But I thought the other districts don't have SROs.
They have, even if they work for the Sheriff's Department or a local municipality, they are called SROs, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Benway?
May I? I'm starting to feel like a broken record. Security of citizens in Moore County is a whole-of-government project. We can't get away from that, we can't just let the, the responsibility sit here at, at the Moore County Schools, uh, headquarters. I'm a participant in the, the Safety Committee. We've undertaken to, to begin to create that whole-of-government, uh, approach, with the, the sheriff providing representation on that, that, that committee. We've taken the approach to use a deliberate process that sorts the wheat from the chaff, that sorts out the stream of consciousness from the innuendo and gets to the real facts of the matter, and the requirements that are generated by the facts of those, that matter. I anticipate that if we can continue without this continuous churning of misinformation, disinformation, and innuendo in opinion, that we can probably get to the core of this thing and reshape the mission, uh, to include its, its, its true requirements. We have got a, we've got to update our threat assessment. We have a new threat environment here in America, uh, that's been created over the last four years, and we've got to account for that. Those things will be addressed in, 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 in a restricted fashion with security, but we have to address those things, and that has to be factored into our mission. Our SROs represent a unique value. These guys have got the knowledge, skills, and abilities that have been cultivated and assembled over many years of, of, of working these schools. The notion you would get rid of the SROs is preposterous. Any combination of law enforcement is gonna have to include these SROs, and whatever combination and, uh, a combination of law enforcement we employ, they're gonna have to learn how to be SROs themselves. So we've got a good base in, a good base in knowledge here, and we want to keep that. So, boy, the real work's gonna get done is not here spitballing and, and throwing around opinion. The real work is to get done in that Safety Committee that will bring you our progress. Now, I'll leave the rest to the, to the chair to address. Um, I think we need to take a, a very serious approach to this whole thing. Had we not, had we begun to do this a few years ago, perhaps we'd be in much better position, uh, but let's start, let's just do a serious, uh, deep dive into the mission requirements and the resourcing required for that. If it were up to me, we would have an SRO or some law enforcement in every school tomorrow morning. That's not up to me, but that's surely what we ought to strive for, is to get to that position. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Like my board colleague, I was not appointed to the Safety Committee. Unlike my colleague, I do not pretend to be an expert on law enforcement, but I can do research. This is a serious matter, what my colleague proposes would be irreversible, and it's obvious that there must have been powerful motivation to create the Moore County Schools Police in the first place. What was that motivation? Do the conditions that created the need for MCS police still exist today? What advantages do we get from having our own police force? What can I learn about obstacles to recruitment? Is it valid to assume, assume, that has a meaning in schools and many other lines of work, that turning the MCS police over to the sheriff would result in a dedicated officer in every school? I needed to answer these five questions. I read reports on school shootings from the FBI and DOJ, and papers on the role and impact of SROs, and I interviewed people. We have former SROs who are reluctant to speak and insist on anonymity when they do. We should be concerned about the climate in which brave officers who will run toward an active shooter feel they cannot speak openly. In this regard, I want to recognize Ms. Clark's courage in standing up to address us this evening. Former Chief Sammy McNeil, who spoke to us tonight, endorsed what the others said, and said I could quote him. Now, I reject the idea that Moore County Schools has to follow what other districts are doing. Moore County Schools is seventh from the top in the state for results despite being seventh from the bottom in funding. We did not achieve this by being followers, we are leaders. Last week, we heard from Will Herring about Moore County Schools' proactive strategy to deal with AI, artificial intelligence, to ensure that our students learn what they need to be competitive in the workforce while containing the potential. learn what they need to be competitive in the workforce while containing the potential of AI to undermine learning. Other districts are eager to follow us because we have the vision. We recognized the need, deployed our experts, and developed a strategy. We are leaders. It would be lunacy to tear down what previous leaders in our district have built without first examining it and understanding whether the need for it still exists today. My first question was, why was the Moore County Schools Police Department created in the first place? The initiative came from Sheriff Frank Johnson in 1991, when Sammy McNeil was the officer for all of MCS. "It is wrong," Johnson said, "to have someone else footing the bill while the power of arrest came through him, the sheriff. A law enforcement officer should not be in a position where his loyalties are divided." Superintendent Russo trusted the sheriff's judgment, and a special police course, police force was created under GS 74E. Other sheriffs agreed with Frank Johnson and told their school boards that they should do what Moore County is doing. Moore County Schools' history of leadership goes way back. Changes were needed in 2009 after Sheriff Lane Carter announced he would withdraw from directing traffic. Like Star's charter today, we had no say. The special police could not direct traffic without legislation and a change of status. With the support of Jamie Bowles and a major political effort, the current department was established under GS 115C. That covers the history and the need for the MCS police. Next up, does the need for a dedicated police department still exist today? Spoiler: yes, it does. A good law enforcement officer wants to serve with integrity, and he still deserves clarity about who he works for. Note that we get a new sheriff every few years. There's no guarantee that a sheriff will prioritize staffing the schools. Even if the commissioners could be convinced to fund positions at all of our schools with competitive equipment and compensation, there's no way to compel a new sheriff to keep deputies in all the schools. MCS experienced a sheriff withdrawing services in 2009. As our Safety Committee reported, in most of the school districts that depend on their local sheriffs for SRO coverage, many schools are not covered full-time. The slides cite Lee County, but don't tell you that it is the exception, not the rule. This may reflect the priority that Lee County places on education. Lee County is 20th out of 100 districts in local school funding efforts. Moore County is 89th. Are we all ready to bet that the Moore County Commissioners are going to equip and maintain funding for positions at 23 schools at the rates earned by Moore County deputies and maintain pressure on successive sheriffs to continue prioritizing these positions? I am not. Yes, the conditions that required creation of our own police force absolutely do still exist today. Next, what are the current advantages to having our own police force? Former Chief McNeil described to me how he recruited officers from departments across the state, selecting the best and matching each officer to the school. Having worked for eight years with Officer Aponte at Northmore, I can attest to the value of having a great fit between the officer and the school. If we were to depend on the sheriff's office, our pool to select from would be much smaller, and we wouldn't be the ones to choose. The sheriff would. I have no doubt that Sheriff Fields, if saddled with this responsibility, would strive to find suitable officers for us, but could a future sheriff be criticized for assigning his best officers to what he sees as his core mission and sending the less effective ones to Moore County Schools? Selection of the best candidates from a broad pool and matching them to schools is a clear advantage. Next, consider training. Contrary to what the slides allege, and this was covered by the superintendent and staff presentation, every officer in every agency undergoes training every year through the NC Justice Academy, including our MCS officers. They get the same amount of training. Okay, we saw from the staff presentation, they get more, but something that I think that the staff presentation didn't spell out as fully as I would like to see, the Moore County Schools Police get more appropriate training. Well, base training is the same for all departments, annual base training. Each chief selects the electives for his own force. Our officers get critical incident training, training on dealing with juveniles, juvenile law. They get training on dealing with special needs children. This board knows that having untrained staff interacting with special needs children is an area of potential liability. No sheriff is gonna opt his entire force into school-specific electives at the expense of training on topics needed for work in the streets. Contrary to what the slides allege, our Moore County Schools Police had regular active shooter, shooter training in the simulator and on our own campuses, with staff. I myself participated. I remember Clay Perry getting shot with a paintball before he could give the alarm. If that happened today, Clay would use sentegics to lock down the school. Finally, we don't need to hear, "I don't work for you, I work for Sheriff X." Yes, having our own force is still an advantage. Final question, obstacles to recruitment. When I told you how Sammy McNeil recruited the best officers from agencies far and wide, did you wonder what magic he used? That magic was green. It was money, resources. He was able to offer candidates a raise plus a better car and equipment than what they had. Can we do that today? No. One of the most egregiously false claims in my colleague's presentation is the allegation that Moore County Schools Police is the third highest-paid local agency. No, we are at the bottom. The Safety Committee provided the numbers. We recently tried to recruit a candidate away from Taylortown and failed because it would have been a pay cut. A pay cut compared to Taylortown. We can't recruit because we can't pay. Pretending we have adequate funding is gonna lead to spurious conclusions. Garbage in, garbage out. There are two more obstacles to recruitment. First is separation allowance. What we currently offer is not competitive. Second is this board. Yes, this board. One member in particular publicly defames and denigrates our Moore County Schools Police, falsely claiming that they have covered up crimes or refuse to respond. This member micromanages the force, seeking to impose requirements that are not their mission, such as trauma medical training, requiring the, uh, and, and special response teams, SRT. SRT have not been considered appropriate in schools for 25 years, ever since they failed spectacularly at Columbine. Being forced to spend time on stuff that is outside the mission is terrible for morale. I'm gonna address one more false claim. I quote, "MCS put minimal effort into upgrading the force and only won under pressure." Balderdash. "The history of the MCS police shows clearly that commitment, resources, talent, and leadership went into building the force whose excellence I experienced in my time at Northmore. What we need to get back to that vision is money. Fully staffing our schools with SROs will require fully funding all 23 positions with the best equipment and competitive pay. This is true whether the SROs are under the control of our own police or the Sheriff's Department, but the sheriff would have to recruit, train, and equip deputies, thus spending more to achieve a poorer result than if we keep it in-house. We need to keep our Moore County Schools Police and go convince the commissioners to provide adequate funding to recruit and equip the officers we need. They know we don't have proper funding, and they know that Moore County Schools and the safety of Moore County Schools is a reflection on them as well as on us."
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Dahl. Any other comments?
I knew I should have gone before Amy. Um, I'm gonna keep mine short and sweet, hopefully to the point. Um, I thank the staff for bringing that report. I was hoping to see that we would have a report and that, and that full representation shared with the Safety Committee would be shared with us and the public tonight, so thank you for that very much. I want to say that our SROs are some of the finest people in this district. They've worked tirelessly throughout this district. I find them to be extremely professional, extremely valuable to the mission of Moore County Schools. Safety, of course, is paramount importance in our schools, and I want to thank the Safety Committee for diving into this deeply instead of on a surface level. And so I want to thank you for getting the data to, to talk about these points, bringing that together and thinking about it thoughtfully. That's how this problem will get solved, in my opinion, is thoughtfully with a large group of people working on the problem. I also want to address, Mr. Hensley has said for years, turn it over to the Sheriff's Department, turn it over to the Sheriff's Department. I heard that before I ran for a school board, and the question I always had was, where's the sheriff's opinion? How can we get the sheriff's point of view into this conversation? And so I want to thank the committee for bringing that point of view to the table, and then also working to provide a solution to the problem that will be workable. I firmly believe we need armed officers in every school, and I want, I'm looking forward to see how the committee works to get that recommendation to happen. I will say this, though, if any recommendation that comes in front of this board that has anything to do with diminishing our school resource officers, disbanding the force without a plan for them, and not putting them first, is not something I will ever support. And so, they need to be first in our conversations. What are their needs? What are their wants? How do we recruit better? How do we make sure that happens? I will agree with Dr. Dahl. Part of the problem in recruiting is the incessant negativity about our school resource officers. Every time I see something that says that we need to turn it over to the professionals, my, my stomach churns. These folks are extremely professional in their work, and we need to support them every step of the way. So, again, I'm not as eloquent as Dr. Dahl. I do not have my five questions, but I do want to say that I'm all in on the solution. What is the solution? I'm all in on the committee working to make that solution happen, and I thank them for diving deeply into this issue with multiple municipalities and the Sheriff's Department at the table.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Davis?
I'm even less eloquent than you are, sir, but I'm okay with it. Um, I'm not in the business of abandoning anybody. We're not gonna abandon, I, for one, as a school board member, will not abandon our SROs. We will, we will do better, or do more of the hard work that was already done, as Ms. Dahl spoke already, that leadership is what mattered to begin with, and leadership is what's gonna get us over the next hurdle. It's lots of legislative things that need to be changed. That's the main issue, is legislative, and it's gonna take time, and it's gonna take energy, but, um, my hope is that soon we'll be able to bring to the board a resolution that would go out to state representatives with our board-approved legislative issues that we think would really get us over the hurdle. That's one of the, one of the deep dive things. I'm not gonna get into the details of it right now, 'cause it's not appropriate and we're not prepared to, but we're working on it. As far as, um, any kind of insinuation that we'd have SROs that cover up any type of crime or activity, 'cause that, that has been what's been stated. I've looked into several personnel files and just done my own research to see if Moore County Schools is holding itself accountable, and I can't find anything that has not been, the i's dotted and the t's crossed, and they do impeccable work, and that's across the board. That's not just for our SROs, that's for Dr. Locklear, that's for every member of our central office staff. The work is exceptional, and it's gonna continue to be exceptional, so I'm, I'm pleased to report that I've seen that, um, if there's a complaint, it's, it's looked into. If the details are given, there will be records to be found. Um, I get, one thing I did write, the, the cadet program, I don't want that to go, um, kinda, there's so much information from tonight, I don't want it to be unnoticed. Um, we did have a good, um, meeting with Mr. Conway and the cadet program. We thought that that was something we were really gonna be able to look into doing for our, our people, but general statute prevents us. Again, that's another thing that we'll be looking at, um, general statute, um, to try to get that remedied. But, um, just to know that you are loved and appreciated. The Moore County Schools SROs are excellent people, and we're here to support you in any way that we can, and that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Hensley, you've, you've had the floor. Did you have, wanna say anything else?
Yeah, I got a couple of things in response to what other people have said. Um, so, a couple of things, in no particular order, this is in response to what people have said. Um, so, the superintendent said this was an innovative idea, and, um, Ms. Dahl said that others are eager, eager to follow us in our innovation. Well, what's interesting is, no, no, it's worth noting that no school district has followed us in this innovation. We were the la, 10 years ago, the General Assembly made us the second school district and the final school district to have our own police force, and, you know, Ms. Dahl said, "Oh, other, you know, we're leading the way, others are eager to follow us." That is true academically. We're doing great things, but it's worth noting, not a single school district has followed us in having our own police force. So, uh, sure, it may have been an innovative idea, but no one's been eager to follow us on this one. Um, one other thought about, you know, the superintendent said, and actually, uh, Ms. Dahl kind of alluded to the same thing, is that people can join who want to be SROs. Well, that's the way, you know, you gotta think how the Sheriff Department's gonna organize an SRO department. It's not just gonna grab a patrol guy and throw him on, you know, him or her as an SRO. That's a specialty division within the Sheriff's Department, just like they have patrol officers, and they have detectives, and they have evidence technicians, and they have trainers. Well, they have SROs. It's a specialized division. Someone raises, you know, after they go through and they, they're a patrol officer, uh, it becomes a pathway, as they would say in academia, it becomes a pathway to success, gives them pathways. And then after they, you know, become an officer and they're a patrol officer for a year or so, then they say, "I want to join the SROs." And it's worth noting that, um, you know, all that training they put up there, the basic law enforcement training, uh, SRO training, that's required of all SROs. Most of that's required by state law. There's some stuff that we do, that, you know, most departments do, but most of that is required, they act like that's specialized, but the SROs in Lee County, the, the SROs in every school district in North Carolina do that stuff. That's not unique to Moore County Schools. If the Sheriff Department takes it over, they're gonna have the same state-mandated training, and in addition, they're gonna have more officers. You know, that's the interesting thing, too, because, you know, my colleague said, "If we have our own department, we have a bigger pool to choose from." Well, that's not true. I mean, the Sheriff Department's got, what, 100 and some-odd officers? They got a huge pool to pull from, and some of those, for various reasons, will want to specialize in SROs. That's become a highly specialized, trained division that, you know, the, the officers serve in. Um, the, um, the separation allowance, I don't understand this whole thing about separation allowance. I need to get smarter on that, obviously. What is the separation allowance, in a nutshell? Is that a policy thing? Maybe we can discuss?
It is policy, but, but I, I will say that the law-
It hasn't been finalized, right? Okay, so we're not talking about it today? Okay. You know, another interesting thing is in academia, I hear evidence-based, 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 but tonight, I look up here, and right here, evidence-based would say, if I looked at these schools and I figured out the percentage of schools that had full-time SROs, that we are indeed probably the lowest. I find it odd that everyone who wants to be all evidence-based maybe doesn't dig quite as much into this evidence, and my colleague took a former police chief's word with no evidence that he recruited, uh, wrote this down, not sure I can find it, I don't know, the best-ever officers, which, without any evidence. I mean, I thought we were evidence-based, so I would ask my colleague, "Where's the evidence on something you presented as a fact that's a judgment?" Uh, uh, I'm sorry, a, um, it's an opinion. The other thing is, my colleague said the commissioners haven't provided the funding. Well, that's not true. Two years ago, three and a half years ago, we had a special meeting, it was up there on the slide, and my colleague can't have it both ways. She can't refer to the slides when it favors her, and then say, "Oh, the county commissioners didn't give us the funding," when the slide's right here from her committee said the commissioners gave us the funding, so we've had the funding for the SROs for quite a while. I mean, we set their wages, we gave them two pay raises, but we've had the funding, we've clearly had the funding. We gave two pay raises, two 10% pay raises in a row, I believe, or close to 10%, which was what was recommended, I believe. I'd, we, we, we gave what was recommended, right? I voted against it because I had a different plan, but...
Uh, yes, sir, we've shared that in the past, when the SROs got additional 4% on top of a 4% raise in the state, and then last year, they got an additional 10% raise.
I don't, and then the vice chair had said something about a legislative change. Us eliminating the Moore County School Police, to my knowledge, does not require legislative change. If the legislation changed, it would mandate, uh, if, if the legislation that allowed us to, this is a question, if the legislation that allowed us to have the Moore County- is a question, if the legislation that allowed us to have the Moore County School Police went away, then we wouldn't have a choice. But the legislation, in my understanding, it says that we may have a police department. Is that correct?
Yes, but that's not at all what I'm referring to.
Okay, okay. All right. I just want everyone, it's a very important point. It's our call. It is, you know, we do not have to have this. The legislation said that we may have it. The final thing, the final point that I want to make is the SRT team thing, that again is blown out of, that is not at all what I proposed. What I proposed was, and out of brevity, I left it out of this because I briefed it in two previous meetings, two and three years ago, so I didn't think it was need to go into it again, but let me go into it again. Again, you've got to look at, you've got to, the assumption is, is if there's a, if there's a mass shooting in Moore County or anywhere, it's going to happen at a school. Therefore, we have to have the most capable, the highest trained, the best trained, the best equipped, and the most professional police force able to respond to that, right? And my suggestion was, at the time, at the time, our pay was about 30, well, my proposal was to get the Moore County School Police within 30% of the average pay. This was my proposal. Everybody, 30% of the average pay. You guys remember this. Then we optionally allow officers, all new officers who come on board have to be SRT certified, and the existing officers would be grandfathered if they wanted, all existing officers would be grandfathered, but existing officers, they wanted to be, they become SRT certified. And new officers, it would be required, and also some level of trauma medical certification. In exchange for that, they would get proficiency pay equal to 40, 35, or 40% of their pay, which would make them the highest-paid officers in Moore County. Literally, I said two times in a row with a PowerPoint, these will be the highest-paid officers in Moore County, but they'll be the best trained. So how that got morphed into, oh, Hensley doesn't want higher pay, Hensley doesn't, Hensley's anti, I actually proposed twice highest-paid officers in the county, but I wanted an increase in standards because I want to make damn sure that our faculty, staff, and students are protected. And let's talk about this SRT idea for a minute. I understand about Columbine, and unfortunately, we saw it again in Texas where the responders didn't respond. They formed a perimeter, and bad guys did bad guy things. My proposal was, if you have a, if you have an officer trained in SRT, they know the techniques, they got their plates, they got their plate carrier, they got their M4 carbine, there's an active shooter, the person throws their plate carrier on, they go and respond. And yes, they charge in individually because that's what the current TTPs are, that's what the SOPs say, but there's going to be a team that responds, you know, officers are going to respond, and whether it's a sheriff SRT team or someone, eventually, an SRT team's going to show up there. My proposal is if our SRO, oh, that's the other part, not only the SRT certified, but they train with the SRT team that would respond to their school monthly, they just go and train with them once a month. Then if there was an active shooter situation, they would be trained and equipped to immediately respond to it, and they would be the highest-paid officers in Moore County. Then when the SRT team that supported that school showed up, they would immediately fall in and be integrated in that team because they had been training with them. That was my plan, and that was misconstrued into somehow Hensley doesn't like police officers, just wrong.
That's 10 minutes. Thank you, sir. All right, to conclude, oh, oh, okay, all right, okay, sorry, all right. So on the second, the second round is how many minutes? If we have 10.
Second round is 10 minutes unless the board has a motion to limit that, otherwise.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you had a question. I'm sorry. I thought that was all you wanted. Okay, all right, Ms. Bruno, it's your turn. I'm sorry for that.
Okay. First of all, I want to say that we absolutely love our SROs. We have a great deal of respect for them. They work hard. They put, you guys all put your life on the line every single day, so please don't ever think that this board is against you because we owe you immensely. But I'm hearing all this about money, about we don't pay them enough, but the last time that this board gave a raise to the SROs, it was not recommended by the superintendent. He didn't want us to do it.
All right. I'm good.
Sorry?
Mr. Schwartz, should I make my statement first or allow the board members to?
You can participate in the debate, and you have the last words, Chair.
Okay. All right. All right, I'll go ahead and say part of my statement. Just remember that we're talking about this tonight because we had a board member that requested to make a presentation ensuring the best safety for our faculty, staff, and students. This is not a decision-making time when we will be deciding about our SROs. It's just hearing from one board member and having discussion. We do have a temporary safety committee in place right now, and just very briefly, we have another meeting scheduled. We've been making progress. We have another meeting scheduled for November 24th. We've had Deputy Chief Andy Conway to join us. We're making progress. We're analyzing the issue at hand. We have our policy committee working on the separation allowance issue. We're trying to resolve that. We're looking at salaries. We are involving our experts in the field. We are going to survey our SROs to hear from our own SROs very soon, and once we get through with analyzing all that data, then our process is to bring a recommendation to the board. That's all I want to say at this time, and I'll open the board for a second round. If anybody wants to say anything, just let me know.
I'm not going to say most of the things I had written down, but one of the things, one of the false statements in the presentation that I didn't respond to was just repeated, so I will respond to it. The idea that the probability that if there's a mass shooting in Moore County, it will occur at a school, well, as we all know, there has been a mass shooting in Moore County, and it was not at a school. It was at Senior Citizens Center. But also, I told you, I looked at a lot of data from the FBI and the DOJ and so forth, and when you look at mass shootings altogether, fewer than 25% of them occur at schools. So unless there's something special about Moore County, I don't think that the schools are necessarily the highest probability target.
Any other board members want to have a second round comment?
I'll jump in. You can just, you think about it. So a couple of things. Let me circle back around. So first of all, let me correct one thing that was said earlier. I never, ever, 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 nor would I accuse SROs of covering stuff up. In fact, the vice chair said that, you know, every time she looked into something, all the t's were crossed and the i's were dotted. I will second that. When there was the first outbreak of violence at Cranes Creek in the fall of 2022, it was actually September, October, I went and looked at all the incident reports because I was expecting to see nothing. You know, there were all these horrible videos of students getting beat and stuff, and, you know, some of them involved faculty and whatnot, and I'm like, man, I bet none of this stuff was reported. I found exactly the opposite. Three days, four days, five days, whatever, certainly less than a week after that, after that, all those incidents came to light. I was sitting in the office in there, and I looked at all the incident reports at Cranes Creek. Every, you would look at every single video. There's like, what, 12 videos? They couldn't find it. A couple of them just weren't at school. But every single video, you could look at the video and you could read the incident report that was filled out by the staff at Cranes Creek. And you would sit there and you would read the incident, and you would look at the video, you'd say, yep, that was that one, that was that one. My point in saying this is in every single one of those instances, the school filled out every form, every incident report, everything was filled out by the SROs. It came up to the central office, and what most people would determine, well, let's just say that the school board wasn't notified of a large amount of fights that occurred over a four-to-five-month period, some of which involved the faculty and staff, and this was the fall of 2022. This had nothing to do, the principal did her job, the SROs at that school did the job, the breakdown was at the central office. So I would never accuse, just like I never, ever said anything about teachers, I would never say anything about SROs. There's a difference between criticizing policy and the decisions and the repercussions of decisions made by senior administrators and the people who have to execute it. So I resent the characterization that I've done this because I've just never done it. The, an interesting thing about salary exempt, I've looked into this, I've had several discussions with HR about this a couple of years ago, because when I first, you know, when we had school board meetings and we had six or seven SROs here, I'm like, wait a minute, is this taken away from our schools? And that's when I learned, actually to my horrors, that our SROs don't get overtime pay. They are salary exempt, and they get comp time. And, you know, if the committee's going to look at something, they really ought to look at that because if they're working nights and weekends, don't give them comp time, give them overtime. That's what people deserve, you know. I disagree with a lot of stuff that happens in California, but in California, if you work more than 40 hours a week, maybe it's eight hours a day. Washington State's more than eight hours a day, you're paying overtime. You know, if you want to revisit something, revisit comp time and pay them overtime, you know, if you're going to have them work on Friday night, pay them time and a half. So there's lots of things, again, that's why I should be on that committee because I would be asking questions like this. What's this separation allowance thing? Again, I keep going back to that. Yes. I mean, we ought to, I mean, before you guys talk about it in policy, we ought to chat about it a bit and kind of get our opinions on it.
We are in our safety committee. Dr. Locklear, she put the details, though, it's about when they retire.
It's called special separation allowance. It's part of, correct, yes, sir. And it's about, general statute governs, our school board policy has set a certain parameter around, you have to be in Moore County Schools 10 years to get 50%, and this is a formula-driven separation allowance based on your years of experience, et cetera. You have to be in Moore County Schools 20 years to get 100% of that separation allowance, which you receive up to the age 62. We received feedback that we needed to look at that. That was actually the feedback we received from the sheriff, we needed to look at that, and that may help us retain or possibly recruit some additional officers by looking at that in a more reasonable way. So there's some additional discussions we're having with the policy committee at the next policy committee.
Good question for the public, too. Because of different pots of money, and I don't understand it, I mean, I understand the concept of different pots of money, but someone can, Moore County School is uniquely positioned in that officers who've retired from surrounding departments can come work for Moore County Schools, but they can't go to work for other departments. How does that work? Is it true, like, if you retire from the Sheriff's Department, you can't go to work for Aberdeen, but you can come work for Moore County Schools? Aren't there some different pots of money?
I'm not saying if Chief Gooch has got anything he wants to share with there, but in general, as a state employee, once you retire as a state employee, you'd have to go work for a local government organization to be able to work and receive full salary.
So the school district is state, and the sheriff and local are all local?
Two different retirement systems. We're in the T-Sers and they're in the LGs, I believe is how it's called.
So officers and vice versa, so officers can retire from Moore County Schools and go work at the Sheriff's Department or municipal and vice versa?
That would be my understanding, but Chief Gooch, you want to share anything?
That's true, because it's two separate retirement systems. So like, I'm retired local government, I can't go work for another local government agency like the Sheriff's Department, Aberdeen, but I can come work for the state and vice versa. Sheriff's Department, they can't come and work for the state, same way with everybody, every other municipality, but if it's the same retirement system, you can't retire twice in the same system.
Okay, so the sheriffs and municipal departments all have the same retirement system, so Moore County Schools is unique, and if somebody wants to work for the government after retiring from the sheriff's office, if they want to work, they can work for us where they can't work for municipal.
That is correct.
Okay, that's all.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Bruno.
I am not on the safety committee, but I did go visit the safety, I sat as an outsider at the safety committee. I'm just going to give this little tiny bit of advice, I mean, just coming from me. But the safety committee invited the assistant, how do I say it? Oh, the deputy sheriff to come. But you guys talked the whole time and didn't listen to him, and he was the authority. You gave them like five minutes? I really honestly, and he noticed, I really think that if you're going to invite somebody who, this is their profession, they're the expert, they're coming to talk to us, I just think that you should be quiet and listen to the authority.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, I believe that's everybody. Okay. So just to reiterate, I want to be clear that this presentation was a request of one board member. I thank all of our board members for making their comments tonight. I thank our staff for presenting some more information tonight. Our Moore County Schools and our SRO police force operate with integrity, and we follow the law. It's ingrained in us. We are fortunate to have a dedicated police force. I am grateful and thankful to those that came before me to have the vision and the leadership and the integrity and the fortitude to have this for our schools. We are so fortunate. I'm thankful to our Board of Commissioners for funding our additional SROs, and we are the ones tasked to figuring it out, like, what are we going to do? And that's exactly what we're doing with our temporary safety committee. We have asked Chief Deputy Andy Conway to come back. I have had a personal conversation with our Sheriff Fields. I have had conversations with others, experts. We are going to reach out to our SROs to find out what they think and what they say. We're making progress. We will bring a recommendation from our temporary safety committee as soon as possible. I'm looking forward to our November 23rd meeting. So this, excuse me, what else I, 20, okay, 24th, getting close to Thanksgiving. So I appreciate all the efforts tonight. Thank you for your time and commitment. At this time, we're going to take a brief recess, seven minutes, please. At this time, we're going to take a brief recess, seven minutes, please. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting back into session. At this time, we're at item seven, Board Action. We have three topics, Dr. Locklear.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, it's Moore County Schools 2025-2027 Selected School Improvement Plans. I appreciate the board's engagement throughout the process of being, receiving these plans at your October work session, hearing presentations for principals on October 21st and 22nd. And as shared at your work session last week, this does come with my recommendation for the board to approve these selected school improvement plans along with the confidential safety, safety components of each plan.
Okay, the superintendent has reme, excuse me, do we have a motion to approve the 2025-2027 Moore County Schools' school improvement plans and the confidential included safety plans?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion, Dr. Doll, do we have a second, Ms. Bruno? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, six one. Next item, endorsement of design build.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As shared last week, Ms. Purvis shared information around our recommended endorsement of design bill for technology and planning and research building to Retson and asking the board to endorse up to $105,000. That would include up to $50,000 for architectural plans and $55,000 for site plans for this design bill once the site is determined. And this does come with my recommendation for the board to approve the design bill services to Retson Company and authorize the development of architectural site plans up to the amount of $105,000 pending final legal review. So that does come with my recommendation, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to award the contract for design build services to Retson Company and authorize the development of architectural and site plans up to the amount of $105,000 pending legal review? Do we have a motion, Mr. Benway, do we have a second?
Second.
We have three seconds. Dr. Doll, got it first. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, we have one comment, yes, sir.
Bring it into action with a comment. You know, I'm, I'm prepared to vote for this. We discussed this in, in, in the work session and a very important point that I'm going to make and just verify whether this is true or not is we're voting for the design portion of the building, but it's independent of the exact location, so if we can change location of the building and we're, we're still going to use the design.
Correct. At this point in time, what we would move forward with pending the review of the contract would be the architectural plans. So that would be the actual design of the building and what it's going to look like and what the actual footprint would be. Once the final site is selected, then we could move forward with citing that building that's already planned on whichever site is determined.
Any other comments?
Yeah, my, my follow-up comment to this, and again, I'm fully prepared to vote for this just because we're, we're going to need this anyway. I just question for my fellow board members, you know, yea or nay, or I'm not sure that it matters, but I mean, do we lose anything if we put this off until the site's determined?
The only thing that we, I mean, no, you don't, the only thing that we do ahead of time, if we go ahead and complete the architectural plans is it gives us a better idea of exactly how much the building will cost. You know, we have kind of a roundabout figure, but we really can't know exactly the amount of that building, how much funding we're expected going to be needing unless we have those full plans. So if we move forward with the $50,000 in architectural plans, that allows us to get a really, you know, here's the building, this is exactly what it's going to be and all the components of it. Once we finalize the final site, then that would censure the deal because we would then know how much site work we have to do, including, you know.
Right, right. And, and just one follow-up question, and the building's small enough where you're going to be able to find the right terrain to park it. It's not, you're not going to have to modify the building much.
Correct. The building is about 12,600 square feet, just a little less than that.
By 120 square feet, yeah, okay.
All right, we have a motion on the table with a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you. All right, we're at item C.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is second reading of new and revised policies. We went through this with the board at the work session. As noted, Dr. Patterson's not able to be with us tonight, but we have Assistant Director of Human Resources Andrea Burton with us. Thanks for being here, Ms. Burton. There, these were pretty straightforward requirements and tweaks to Title IX based on current regulation and, and recommendations of North Carolina School Board Association and our school board attorneys. I do recommend that the school board consider a motion to approve these new revised policies.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the new and revised policies?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Dr. Doll, a second.
Second. Do we need that since it's coming from a committee? Am I wrong?
Oh, sorry.
I could be wrong.
It, it is a recommendation from the committee.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion, we don't need a second?
Yeah, we just need to vote.
We just need to vote, so let's vote.
Sorry.
Any comments? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much. We're at item eight, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Locklear.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm pleased to share a few things with you tonight, celebrations that I'm, I know the board may have heard, but I'm excited to share this with you and members of our public tonight. As we heard recently, Pinehurst Elementary School is being recognized as a North Carolina Blue Ribbon School. And it's been named one of four inaugural North Carolina Blue Ribbon Schools by the North Carolina Department of Public Construction. This is a new state-level recognition program that continues your tradition of honoring schools that demonstrate excellence in academic performance and student growth as the national Blue Ribbon School Program was discontinued at the national level recently. Pinehurst Elementary was recognized in both categories with this award, exemplary high performing and exemplary achieving, achievement gap closing, reflecting the school's innovative and structural practices, commitment to the whole child, and strong community partnerships that enhance student learning. They'll be recognized at the December State Board of Education, Education Meeting here in a few weeks. And we'll also be able to bring in Principal McNeil and recognize them at Pinehurst Elementary after December Board Meeting. So we look forward to celebrating them and continue to celebrate with them. We're incredibly proud of that Dolphin family and all their hard work over the years, Principal McNeil, the staff-student families on a significant achievement, and of course, former Principal Chacony as well, who was a big part of that as well. The board may remember, in August, we recognized the Northmore FFA Nursery and Landscape Team for winning first place in the state of North Carolina for Nursery and Landscape Career Development Event. Just a week ago, on October 29th, the team traveled to Indianapolis, Indiana to compete in the 2025 National FFA Nursery and Landscape Career Development Event. They earned gold team honors, finishing fifth in the nation. Just 75 points shy of a top four national ranking. That's awesome. It's great stuff. Team members included Luke Atkins, Gavin Moore, Braden Sutherland, and Casey Williams. I'm incredibly proud of these students and they've got a great advisor and great teacher in Mr. Bradley Ked for all their hard work, his hard work, dedication, preparation, leading up to this event. So again, congratulations to Northmore High School FFA for representing at the very highest levels in the nation. So congratulations to them. Also want to give a shout out to Pinecrest and Union Pines and Northmore Theater Programs who competed in the state regional North Carolina Theater Conference, a state high school play festival. Moore County Schools swept the directing awards. That means each director of those, those schools, they swept their awards. With Northmore, Union Pines, and Pinecrest receiving all three directing awards. And we've got two schools that are moving forward, Pinecrest and Union Pines, to, to compete at the state level. So we're looking forward to seeing how they will perform, and I believe this Wednesday, help me out, Ms. Parker, Wednesday at Pinecrest High School, you'll be able to see all three shows, and I believe that begins at 7:00 PM. Okay, so that'd be a great opportunity to see them. I also want to, with tomorrow being Veterans Day, it is a school holiday for, for our, our students and staff to recognize and be in remembrance of Veterans Day and celebrate Veterans Day. I want to thank Ms. Bruno for her beautiful recognition of that. And I want to thank and recognize all of the many veterans who serve on the Moore County Schools employee team. We appreciate their service to their country and continued service to their community. And also want to recognize the many veterans in our community. So again, Happy Veterans Day and thank you, board, for your engagement and work tonight. I apologize, 6:00 PM. Awesome, thank you, Ms. Parker.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Locklear. All right, we're at Board Comments. Anyone like to start? Mr. Benway?
I'd like to wish a belated happy birthday to-
I'd like to wish a belated happy birthday to my, my colleagues in the Marine Corps, Semper Fi.
Semper Fi.
We're proud of you. And I also extend a happy Veterans Day to all my colleagues in and out of uniform. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'll add Semper Fi. My father was a Marine. I was in the veterans parade on Saturday in Southern Pines, and I was so thrilled to see the Union Pines High School Band and the Union Pines High School Navy Junior ROTC participate. I was so proud of them, they were amazing. So I want to say thank you to Lieutenant Commander Tim Nguyen and Sergeant Major Alan Smith, their instructors. I also want to think, thank Major McClay and Master Sergeant Jefferson at Pinecrest. These men build students with character, values, and respect. So I want to say thank you to all of our veterans. We are here today because of you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm not calling on anybody.
I want to thank the speakers who came to address us tonight. Mr. Mizziak, thank you for your vital work on vision screening. Ms. Clark, again, I commend your courage. Let me also thank our SROs for their professionalism and doing their jobs throughout all that has been said tonight. And by apologizing to them for aspersions cast on them by the board on which I serve, I want to extend the same thanks and apologies to our superintendent. And finally, I want to say to the SROs who are listening, I hope you hear all of the voices on this board that value and support you as Moore County Schools police.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Doll. Anyone else?
Well, Dr. Locklear took most of mine. Pinecrest and Union Pines, that's a show, glad you put it on our calendar. I probably will be there. I don't manage my calendar, so. I also want to say, Union Pines football this Friday, is it this Friday?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so all good feelings out to Union Pines football in the, in the first round of the playoffs for them. I'll also reiterate, Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans out there, and thank you for your service. That's it for me.
Anyone else? All right, I'll conclude. Again, I want to thank our board members and our staff for an enjoyable and productive meeting this evening. Thank you to our student leaders tonight for leading us in the pledge and for inspiring us. Congratulations to those who were recognized for the outstanding service. And again, thank you to our veterans. I do have a statement that I want to share tonight. One of our important roles as board members is to advocate for our schools and the community that we serve. Two weeks ago, we hosted a joint meeting with our Board of Commissioners that left me a little personally disheartened, and I believe it's my duty to make a statement about the event and a particular comment. The purpose of the joint meeting was for our administration team to review the details of the new Carthage Elementary School and future capital needs. Unfortunately, the meeting turned into more of a disparaging political event than a time for board collaboration and support of Moore County Schools. The message that we heard that day was loud and clear. Some in our community do not truly believe in or support public schools. There are those among us who intentionally plant seeds of doubt and enable efforts to disrupt and disparage the work of the Board of Education and our staff. We must be resilient advocates for the right of every child to receive a high-quality public education. For a sitting member of the Board of Commissioners to say that, quote, "Public schools as a whole have been driven to an ideology that nobody wants to send their kids to public schools, and that's probably a last option and not a first option, but if you're a Christian, that's what you're thinking as far as I'm concerned. I would not let my kids go back to a public school, and I did not as soon as I could get, get mine out," end quote. I adamantly disagree with this statement, and it was hurtful and appears very biased and intentional. It has always been a parent's choice to decide how to educate their children. My husband and I are both Christians, and we choose to send, we chose to send all three of our children to Moore County Schools where they received an excellent education, and now our grandchildren attend. As for me and my, and our family, we are extremely grateful that our many generations were provided with an education through public schools, and we are honored that our tax dollars are used to support all children without bias and within the high-quality, accountable structure of public education. I stand beside the quality of our school district, the decisions of our Board of Education, and the delivery of our services for all children without exception. And this is our mission statement and vision statement. It's really our vision statement. Moore County Schools is without a doubt the first and best choice in education with an unwavering commitment to excellence, innovation, and ensuring the development of the leaders of tomorrow. Thank you for the opportunity for me to make that statement. And we are at adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'm sorry. Did you, did you want to? Okay, all right, at this time, we'll recess and move into closed session. Thank you for your time. Sorry.
You need a motion to go back into closed.
Okay, we need a motion, we need a motion. This is my first time.
I move we return to closed session. Sorry?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, we, we have a motion to return to closed session. Do we have a second? Okay, so we have a motion on the table.
Is that for the reasons stated on the agenda?
I was going to say, what is the reason?
Yeah, we don't have a reason.
I want to withdraw my motion until we have a reason.
Okay.
So I sent the request to the Superintendent's Secretary and the Chair. I sent the, I sent the request to add something to the closed, to the closed session three weeks ago, two weeks ago?
Yeah, you should have made a motion to amend the agenda, to have it added to the closed session.
No, I assumed it was already included in the purpose.
He can, he can make the motion to go into closed session.
Okay.
Now, so, so let's back up.
So you've made the motion to go into closed session.
I, I did not make a motion to go into closed session. Two and a half weeks ago, I sent a request to add something to the closed session agenda. I assume it's covered by the purpose of why we're going in there.
I understand what you're saying.
So I don't understand why I need to do anything else other than we go into a closed, a second closed session.
Okay. Mr. Schwartz, anything to add?
You still need a motion to go into closed session.
Okay, so we, we need a motion. Dr. Doll withdrew her motion.
Make a motion that we return to closed session to continue our closed session.
Ms. Bruno, seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. All right, let's start over again. All those in favor of going into closed session, let's raise our hands. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, all right, we'll move into closed session. Thank you for being here tonight.